I have six thirty, so I will call the meeting at the Van Alstine workshop to order. This is Tuesday, January the seventh at six thirty. We had hoped to have a bigger turnout. Some people, I talked to Jim on the way in, he was not aware of the meeting until this morning when he called. So, but we will have our meeting tonight and a discussion regarding the utility rates established by ordinance number six ninety-nine. The reason that we're, we're not going to continue to keep our backs to you, but when we were sitting down there, we were so close to the screen that we could not see the screen. So, we will be turned this way and the other. So, we will start out with number two, which is the discussion regarding the utility rates and ordinance. And, Mr. Baker?
Yes, ma'am. General, we both excel at this question. Mayor, council, we have Phil Givens back up, help us out, help establish the water rate comparison and help us walk through whatever issues or whatever you all see fit to modify. I know you all received some input over the last few months. See what y'all, from the input you gained, what y'all would like to see changed or just go from there?
We do not have a list of people who wish to speak, are there?
Julie.
This is a workshop. It is not mutually as formal as a council meeting.
No, ma'am.
And people who have questions or statements aren't invited to spend some in our sort of a fashion regarding the ordinance. Is that correct?
Yeah, they just seem to be recognized by the new mayor.
We will start out the discussion with council. Do you have any comments you want to make regarding this Councilman Smith?
My question is, well, I have a couple of them on the anticipated number of houses to be built. I've noticed that the reports that we get from whoever that is that sends them to us, we've only had one house per month. I don't know how we could ever expect forty-five. That's questionable. The, the other issue that I've had from the very beginning, it's not so much the rates, but it's the effective date. And my question would be who, who authorized or who set that effective date so well and, and the reason behind it?
Historically, that's, that's the date that's when it's come, when y'all vote on it, if y'all set a date, that's when it becomes effective.
Okay.
Historically, that's the way it's been done.
But you made the decision to, to have that ordinance written or did the city attorney write it so there was, there was no effective date? Was that?
To establish any water rate, the ordinance has to be written period. It has to be submitted.
I understand.
Round for council for your approval, for your scrutiny, for you to decide whether you want to modify or whether you want to change anything.
So ordinance was modeled after the one that's been used historically?
And we have historically gone back retroactively forty-five days on water rate increases?
I don't know how many days, but I, my understanding is historically the new rate has been applied to the next bill that goes out after the effective date of the ordinance.
Okay, so.
It worked that way the last time we did one, I know.
Retroactive forty-five days?
Well, it didn't go retroactive. It just went out. I mean, the next billing. Remember when we changed the sewer?
My question is, why didn't we have a rate go into effect forty-five days retroactive from the day it was voted on?
Where did you, where are you getting forty-five days, Jim?
The forty, forty, not from the, excuse me, not from the day it was voted on, but from the billing cycle. It was forty-five days. That rate went into effect forty-five days prior to the, the first of October. It, it went back a whole cycle. That, now, there's no, there's no need to discuss when it went in. It went in forty-five days retroactive. That's a fact. There's no need to discuss that. I just want to know why.
I'd like to see that because I don't know where you're getting it.
I want to know why we had a rate that went into effect forty-five days retroactively in the highest billing month of the year.
And without notification to the citizens?
That, that's my question.
Do you have a copy of the billing that we can see, Jim? I don't, I don't recall, I don't recall that.
I was told that at the billing office when I called to complain about my bill being nine hundred dollars. She specifically said it went back forty-five days.
That's where your evidence is coming from, John, from City Hall?
Can we, I'd like to see that. I didn't see it on my bill.
There's testimony right there.
What's, someone added?
Well, I thought it was supposed to be October, October first, and I got a bill before October first for the increase.
Now, you're trying to avoid it. It's all you want to.
Just a moment, just a moment.
One at a time.
Don't you have copies of all the bills right there in front of you to look? Couldn't be that hard to find out.
How would we have all the bills in front of us, ma'am?
It's got a computer, isn't it right there? Don't you have?
This bill was started in August. Is that not correct, Jennifer?
The service dates were from mid-October, mid-August to mid-September, billed out October first.
Okay, then it was from one billing cycle to the ne, one term to the next, plus the days to the billing cycle. Is that correct?
The rate was effective as of September twenty-seventh.
It went out on October?
The bill date is October first.
October the first.
The service date for that, the service dates for that bill, October first, were mid-August to mid-September.
Okay, to mid-September. Then it'll retroactively. And then it was to the end of September.
You're actually billing on things you'd already paid for.
To the first of August, to the first of October, right?
Well, yeah, you built something that you already, but you already paid that bill.
Mid-August to mid-September.
Retroactive.
And then the date to the first of October when the bill went out. So, it's not talking, you're not talking about, all of those days were water days, just from mid-August to mid-September, plus the days it was before it went out, right?
It was, it was put into effect retroactively, the rate for water that had already been consumed.
Or being considered and paid for?
So, your question is who?
Who and why did we do that?
Why did you do that? And my understanding is the reason we did it is because it was done that way the last time. Is that correct? I'm asking is for.
Was that the bill store that you spread on?
So, was anyone, was the council aware of the, that it would be done this way?
Whenever they read the meter. Whenever council adopts something, it takes a matter.
No, no, was council aware that it was going to be retro? Because some of them were not on the council the last time the rate went up. Is that correct? I know Mr. Moore was not. I, I wasn't there when the rate was increased. So, they, they did not have the knowledge that that was how it was done last time. Was any notification or was anyone aware of that that's on the council? These two were.
And it wasn't, I remember how we did it.
The question was before. What I'm saying is some of these were not on the council before when it was done. So, they were not aware of it at that time.
In all previous years that I recall, and last year when we, we set the budget, as soon as it was voted on and approved, the next billing cycle that is in effect, then it goes back to that next year meeting, the past year you're dating starts and you're charged. Now, what you're calling forty-five days is not, they don't charge forty-five days consumption. They charge for the usage of that billing period.
Forty-five days.
Forty-five days prior to the, the one day of work day.
And so you actually paid for fifteen days of water because you already paid?
No.
Right? No, really? On, on, on the, I've got the, I've got a copy of the bill here. On eight, on October fifteenth, you were charged for water you used from August sixteenth through September seventeenth. That was the billing period during that time.
And what, what date did we vote on and sign the?
Beginning of September, September twenty-third or twenty-second.
So, how can we go back and charge the citizens without notifying them?
I'm just saying, in every other case where we've done a rate, no matter what it's been for, we've done it that way.
It doesn't make a crime.
Maybe, maybe it was wrong, but we've always done it that way, okay? I'm not saying it was wrong, right or otherwise. I'm just saying that we've always done it that way. Now, you know.
I would have explained the implementation of the ordinance better. It, it never dawned on me that anyone on the council didn't know that the next bill that came out was for, you know, thirty days that had already been used. I, I just thought everybody knew how the water billing worked and the ordinance.
Well, it was my understanding that it would be effective one October and then it would be watered on the next billing cycle from October fifteenth forward. We should have been red meters on October first and started with that cycle.
That's, that's not the, the way the ordinance is written. If y'all wanted to do that, then you, then you would have needed to modify the ordinance.
But it was unclarified even to the council, let alone to the citizens.
Julie, you're, you are aware of the turmoil that this caused, right? You were at the council meeting when we had a petition with three hundred and some signatures.
Four hundred and ten, yes.
Four hundred and ten. You were there when there were eighty or ninety people in the council, in, in the council meeting. That did not happen last time we raised the rates.
But it was implemented the same way, sir.
When you raised the rates before, did you always, when you raised the rates, you always raised the water rate, the meter rate of the sewer and the water? So, that's four times you raised the rate instead of just raising one water rate? Because I have a list of the rates, all the rates went up.
Yeah, well, it, it was a variety of rates changed at that one time. They're paid with.
Julie, I don't mean any disrespect, but, but this is the city manager and the city attorneys should be answering these questions, not you. I mean, that's their job.
I'm allowed to talk here too. And I think the mayor was asking a question and I could give a partial answer to.
But they're the ones that need to answer the questions.
Oh, okay.
Do you have anything else to say?
What their job is is that we set the ordinance. It's our fault. It's your fault, your fault, his fault, his fault, and my fault.
How many towns?
It's not theirs. Their, their job is to, to do what we tell them. If we didn't make it clear, it's our fault.
Their job is to give us quality advice to make decisions.
How many years?
That was not quality advice.
How many years have you voted on the council, Mr. Smith? You've not understood it for six years.
I've been six years, John.
That's what we're talking about, the water.
Not how long he's been on the council.
Then he, he's accepted and voted for six years.
Let's just change it and fix it, guys. Come on. You guys need to put your stuff down. Change it, fix it.
I think the effective rate needs to go back to where it should have, and that would have been the, for new customers on the fifteenth, uh, the first of October, existing customers when the meters were in on the fifteenth. That would, that would solve the problem.
And if this was almost like an ordinance served, we could do that.
Then I would like to amend the ordinance. Well, we can do that with a motion, but I really think right now we need to, these people have come to be heard concerning the ordinance and I think that they need to speak. And I would say make a motion to amend. If you have a comment you would like to make, if you have a comment you want to make regarding the water ordinance, please raise your hand.
Okay. My comments are not strictly with the water ordinance leading up to the water. I'm James Flannery. I live here for seventy years. After reading the article in the Herald Democrat last week about the things that happened in Howe, Tom Bean, White Right, Van Alstine, Foxburg, I was ashamed that our town was the only one that didn't have anything positive that the writers could write about. All the other towns had something positive. It's no surprise with all the happenings of twenty thirteen that they've been called by our city government, and I'm not singling anyone out, by our city government. Every time you pick up the paper, there's something derogatory to do with the city of Van Alstine, court its citizens. Our council, our city government does not have the heart, the best interest of the city's citizens at heart. An example being our government asked us to approve a fourth percent sales tax to go to streets, which we did. And I think there was talk around town that in the new budget, the amount normally contributed from local taxes would be reduced, and it was reduced. So, therefore, the citizens proved something that they were not given. So, it's not in the best interest of the citizen when y'all do things. Now, we're facing another decision about whether or not to try to correct an ordinance that a man that was, knew he was not going to live in the city, knew he was not going to have to pay these rates, voted to increase everyone in this room's water rates.
Are the people also that?
That's right. That's right. But, in the meantime, he had resigned and yet he is still allowed to make the decision to keep our rates like it is. And I don't know whether that's within the laws or the general laws of the state of Texas, but I do know it's not fair and it's not right. In two thousand and eight, I was on the council and we employed an outside firm to come in and study our water rates. And they went into effect in early two thousand and nine. We were told that it would be sufficient for eight to ten years. Another rate was imposed in two thousand and twelve, when the citizens were told this would be good for five years or so. In October of two thousand and thirteen, another rate increase was imposed on the citizens. These increases based on household bill of twelve thousand five hundred gallons went from a bill of ninety-two dollars and sixty cents in July of two thousand and eleven on the same amount of water to one hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents in October of two thousand and thirteen, which anybody can figure is a forty percent increase. The main problem with the new rate structure is you took the ceiling off of the sewer. Our rate consultant in two thousand and eight said that the average consumption of water in Van Alstine that goes back into the sewer is less than six thousand gallons. Mine in Gale's water bill on non-outside watering month run fifty-eight, hundred gallons. Therefore, we felt like that the twelve thousand or the ten thousand five hundred was fair to put a ceiling on. Now, if you water your yard and you use fifty thousand gallons of water, you're going to pay the city for fifty thousand gallons of water when they're only going to treat forty-five thousand gallons. So, therefore, we are being charged for something we're not using. It's hard to see why you can't see that we're being charged for sewer rate and sewer treatment that we're not utilizing. And I would encourage you to think about the hundreds of households in Van Alstine that are on fixed income. In the last two years, they have received less than a five percent increase on their social security. At the same time, you've gone up on their water bill forty percent. And you might think about this last thing. You never know. You may be in several shoes in a few years.
Are there any other comments from the audience? Yes, sir?
Yes, I wanted to speak specifically about revealing six ninety-nine, which at the last big meeting was kind of talked about and then brushed aside or under the carpet.
That's what Mrs., that's what Ms. Tarver was talking about when we, just before we came to question.
Oh, I came in a little late for that. I apologize. I was a few minutes late. But there has been my biggest fan on the board since I have been coming to these meetings after moving to Van Alstine January of the year ten. Now, I have lived here a full four years, but I have all sorts of complaints, even before we had the water issue. And I will be putting that on a request list for next Tuesday's usual meeting. And I have loads and loads of stuff that I think can be improved upon within this city. And I thought that's what the community board was all about when I first started showing up for them, was we're not concerned about here and now in our fine town or city, but we're concerned about the future, our kids, our kids as kids.
That's true, but tonight the issue is the water.
Reveal six ninety-nine. Why have we not yet, and again, why is Mr. Jennings sitting here if he is sitting illegally, as I heard?
Because the law so stood that even though Mr. Jennings has moved to Sherman, he may hold that seat until he is replaced.
And give you a, when a replacement election take place?
We have, that has been on the agenda each month when we go have a council meeting.
Okay, well.
And this is, and this is not my law, but the one that's quoted by our city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Why not?
What?
If Herbre, I lived in Richardson for a while, and on the sewer and water rates Richardson did, and still does in this day, they adjust the sewer rate based on November, December, January rate. So, if your water, you're only using ten dollars worth of water in those months, your sewer rate is going to be that way all year because they figure if you have a hundred dollar water bill in the summer, obviously, you're only using ten dollars worth of sewer because that's what you use when you were not watering the lawn. And that's, that's the way they do that in order to make it fair that you're not paying for water that's already on your lawn. And I've never heard that mentioned here as a possibility.
Explain it one more time.
Okay. Normally, the sewer rate.
December and January.
And what quarter? Could be January, three months of winter.
Three months.
Three months in the winter, the people do not water their lawn. Sewer rate for the entire year is based on that period of time.
That's the way they do Mesquite as well.
That's the way they do it. And I, I've brought it up twice here during two little water rate changes and nobody really wanted to go with it.
Can I ask a more question? Duncanville and where?
Uh, Duncanville, Richardson, Mesquite. I believe that even, maybe Anna or Melissa, one of those two.
If this ordinance is pre-done, that would certainly be something you might be favorable to.
I would be in favor of, yeah.
Okay.
Typically, you're not watering your lawns and you're not filling your pools and.
Yeah, it's.
You're not using water for other than, you know, you normally go back to.
It's not going back into the sewer system.
So, they know what you're using, what's actually going down in the sewer.
So, I'm kind of new here to Van Alstine and.
I'm going to have to ask you when you start. If you would, please state your name. We have a recording and so who you are.
Okay. My name's Aaron Clonmaw. I lived in Van Alstine, I don't know.
Last year?
Yeah, a year ago, December. And like I said, I was caught off guard with the water bills. I watered my yard. The only time I watered my yard was in one month you guys jacked it up. So, I showed up like an eight or nine hundred dollar water bill. But I, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, is, you know, I've never, I've worked for cities in the past. I've been a maintenance supervisor for water utilities. I, I build water and wastewater plants now. It's kind of what my job is. And I kind of wanted to figure out what, what was the driver for the continual increase in water rates? I mean, is it the water system and plant? Are they falling apart or what's, what's the driver? The city just had them there putting water in or?
I think the city, I think the city's, he's going to show you some pipe here that, why we have a problem. But anyway, we have a lot of problem with underground, with our underground system. We have a lot of problems with our, our disposal plant and actually have been fined by the state for not keeping it up to proper levels.
Right, you're being plussed for this.
And all these things have been ignored for many, many years and not money collected to do them or to fix them up or, and that kind of stuff. So, therefore, now we're trying to do it.
Okay, so the last couple of increases didn't fix the problem?
The last one was supposed to fix the wastewater plant.
That's what I'm wondering about, yeah. I mean, I just want, I just want to see if, yeah. I mean, you got to do almost back-to-back water increases.
That was the sole purpose of the last water increase for the wastewater plant. And like I said, it was supposed to last for, you know, three, five years.
So, where to go? What happened?
Well, there, there's a dispute on that. What's, some people say we announced it and tell everything for thirty-five years. I was on the same council voting for it and I don't remember anything about us promising anybody anything.
But you thought it was going to be good for twelve months?
We, the group didn't want to pay for a rate study. So, therefore, since there wasn't really a rate study, it was sort of a haphazard guess as to what you're going to do. What, what would be the right place to go to?
Is that what you're calling John Jennings' study?
I'm calling him not a rate study person, but I'm not, but I'm not putting him down. I'm just saying he tried to do the best he could with what he had.
Let me, let me.
Do we have anything showing the cost for these things?
What?
What's, what's the cost for, I mean?
What is a rate study cost?
No, I mean.
What are the upgrades required, I guess?
What are the costs? What's the cost?
I've just never seen the city fund those kind of things through rate increases. Most of the time, that's a tax deal, you know, you got to catch up. Because you haven't collected a plan for years. Most of the time, that's a, that's a bond or that's something else that you have. You don't, you don't try to run those through rates.
That's right.
And honestly, the way you got to set up the rate structure, I mean, all you're going to do is, I don't know that you're going to see the increase in, in income because I think you're going to get people who just aren't going to water their lawn. You're going to make your community less desirable to live. I mean, you should want to sell more water as long as you have it. And, and from what I understand, we have it here in Van Alstine. We're not, we're not short of water. I mean, we're selling it to other cities.
Let me speak, please.
Go ahead.
What other cities? What other cities are you speaking of?
Well, I mean, we're selling them, but we sold some rights to, I think, Anna and Melissa.
Melissa. I thought I heard this before and I've spoken to a city employee of the city of Melissa. He told me face to face, never, ever has the city of Melissa purchased water from the city of Van Alstine. This was a city employee.
They, they unknowledgeable. Have to go.
Not all city employees. Hey, explain that. I've been meeting the last one.
Yeah, well, and that's what I thought as far as I saw the figure on the board.
I'm just trying to figure out why you guys took, why you guys chose that path and why you think that, because really, this path isn't a path that guarantees you a certain amount of money. So, it doesn't guarantee a funds to replace a, a broken-down wastewater facility or a, or an infrastructure facility inside a city. You know, and really, you're making it less, less probably advantageous for development to come in where, where really your real money could come from. So, I'm just trying to figure out what the thought process was there that, that got here.
Okay, Mr. Jennings, for once.
To address some of the things I asked, I'm not going to get into Mr. Flannery's statements in my, my gallows of serving because I can still serve. I am serving with best interest of citizens. That's all I'm.
When did that change, Jennings? When did that change?
I started writing years ago. There's no rate study that we did last year, as you didn't know. When we became involved in budgets and Mr. Baker came to us during the vacant workshop, the rate study that was done in no way that Mr. Flannery mentioned was never implemented by the city. And when we started looking at that rate study, when Mr. Baker brought the budget to us, in order to get where we needed to be and implement those rates to follow the study that was done in two thousand and eight that had been ignored, the increase would have been out of month. It would have been such a burden to the citizens at that time that we knew we could not do that. We started looking at what we could do because we knew the situation the city was in. The problem is the city never planned for expansion road years past. And when you have deferred maintenance, it means if you're in maintenance, you're not going to talk about deferred maintenance. The deferred maintenance needs of the city is that the money. And we started looking at the budgets and, and the water and sewer department must be self-sustained. They cannot be.
No, most of them are cash positive. I mean, if you look at most towns, they're cash positive.
That was not the case with Van Alstine. In order to be considerate of the citizens and what we needed to do, we have to bring the city up to a standard. We know the city's going to grow just by having to grow. Even if you're not out promoting business and trying to bring growth in, people are moving from the city in the higher populated areas or coming to Van Alstine.
Well, it's exactly what Frisco went through, which is where I grew up, right? What they did is they, they funded most of the growth in the wastewater plants through.
Please, sir. In order, as we looked at this, and, and we sat here and we look, okay, we're four years into a study that was never implemented. Do we put a three hundred percent increase out here? No one wanted to do that. My recommendation at that time was, and I believe everyone should recall it, I wanted to put this to flat rate fee on the bill, twenty dollars per person. When we looked at what we needed to do and the revenue we needed, it averaged out to about twenty dollars a person. No one on the city wanted to do that. No one on the council wanted to put this, a flat fee, twenty dollars for infrastructure improvement. No one on council wanted to put this, a flat fee, twenty dollars for infrastructure improvements on the city water bill, which we could have done, could we not? Without, without a doubt.
Yeah.
Is it? No one wanted to do that, particularly Ms. Tolbert.
That is incorrect information because I wanted to do that also.
Uh, you may have, but the city as a whole would not vote for it. Ms. Tolbert was fully against a twenty dollar increase. She felt because of fixed income, people living in the city, and everyone was considering that. Not everyone could afford a twenty dollar increase. I began then, working with Frank, looking at the rates, what could we do, knowing the revenue stream we needed and the dollar map we needed to get? What could we do? Knowing that ninety-nine percent of people, ninety-two percent of people are gonna fall into one to five thousand gallon range. In order to keep that range where the increase was not so much, in order to satisfy Ms. Tolbert's concerns about the citizens, all of our concerns, particularly her concerns of those sixty-five and over. We structured the rate.
Handicap and unemployed.
We structured a rate. Frank and I worked, we brought it to the city to try to keep the rate at the lower usages, which is fixed income households, at the lowest we could. Making it higher up the range to where we could get the revenue stream we needed to. That's essentially all we did. The statement that was made at that time is, looking at these rates, and it was nowhere near what we actually should have been, could have implemented on the rate study that was done in two thousand eight. It was either do it last year or do it later. We worked, I spent days and hours working on it. We brought this before into council, we put it forward, put it forward to vote to implement this structure. And the statement made was to stay on track if everything, depending how you use it, cause people start conserving. And I became to call Frank, I think we even dropped to like eighty percent of what actual consumption was, because people are gonna conserve. Looking at that, if everything went well, there wasn't drastic needs, and there was no capital reserve in this budget. There was nothing setting back in this budget that we looked at to build a capital. Go, which I go back to, that's the problem the city has. And we have a loss of a well like we've had, two wells we've lost in the last two months. We have a major water leak that occurred like we've had, we have a tissue board, all of this, nothing's ever been planned for that in the city. And we implemented the structure, and the statement made was, if this can hold good, if consumption stays good, and we do have some growth, hopefully, we wouldn't have to go back and make a major change for three to five years. But as you build budgets, each year's needs are gonna be more and more. Somewhere along the line, you need to start building capital. You can't ever say that we're not gonna raise rates for three to five years, and that was never said. What we said was, hopefully, we can stay within this structure for three to five years. This year, when Mr. Baker came to us, he had gone very diligently in doing his work as city manager and acquired the help of Mr. Gibbons who we have here at the city. He could share some great information with each of, and how he intended what he was issuing. Mr. Gibbons has an excellent program, when he brought it to us, it made what we'd done last year look fantastic. Ms. Tolbert didn't like it last year, but she went ahead and voted for it. Now she thinks what we did last year is fantastic because now we realize, thanks to Mr. Gibbons and thanks to Mr. White who was coming in, we can no longer ignore the problems we have.
Would you not speak for me, John? Would you not speak for me?
I'm, Ms. Tolbert, I'm just stating what, what.
No, I'm not saying what was fantastic.
You wanna go back to what we had last year.
Yeah, I'll go back to it.
Last year, you was not, last year, you was against it.
Well, I, I guess what I'd say, and like I said, I've, I've been affected probably as much as anybody. But I mean, what I, what I would say is that, you know, I, I don't think you're gonna get the revenue stream you're asking for. And you're gonna, and you're gonna, you're gonna kinda inhibit some growth, it's kinda stupid way to go after capital money. I mean, it's just, it's not a very, it's not a very bright idea and it's not something that any city with a.
If we'll look, if we'll sit here and if, if, you know, if everyone's willing to look, we can go through this spreadsheet. I have some questions on this spreadsheet and I, believe me, I, I have, I know.
Well, and, and I will tell you that I think the retroactive thing was just. Yeah, I mean, that was just, that was stealing.
Here's my.
I mean, that was just stealing from your, from people who play your bills.
My thoughts on the retroactive bill is this. Because of the increase, it was.
Well, you pick the highest month possible to do it, it's just stupid.
It's the same as, it's always done.
Oh, come on, man, I mean, you know, and not, and really, and to have, have your attorney sit here and go, yeah, we brought you a, a bill without an effective date on it, it's kinda, I mean, that's just stupid. I mean, that's not even paying attention to what you're doing, fella.
I understand, no.
My god.
The problem, the problem is, and I, I, when you look at the, when you look at the structure on this spreadsheet and how the, how the rates are based. What happened is, the billing that went out, no different than it does in the other year. It was because of the percentage increase and then some of the rate structures or some of the consumption.
Oh, I agree, yeah, I think, I think the upper end of your thing is way out of whack.
Last year, last year, it, you're exactly right.
And I think that's somebody, that's somebody who, again, wasn't paying attention when they were looking at those rates.
We will see that. And I, I will, I will, I will tell you what you're saying here. When I, when I, and I've spent hours going through this spreadsheet, column by column, row by row, and I, I see where there's some issues that I think we as a council will take care of this season. And, and I think all of us, I know I have, I think Mr. Moore has, I know Billy has, I'm sure Jim, we have looked through this spreadsheet and we know where there's some things needed.
Well, I mean, it seemed like, seemed like you guys focused on the, on the very small user, but you didn't look at, okay, what happens when you get to the upper echelon, you, man, those guys get.
Nine dollars.
Oh, I know, yeah, like I said, I mean, I was paying, I'm paying, you know, more than, more than I charge a power plant to get demineralized water. I mean, I get, I get steam loads up the road up here and they're, they're getting charged six dollars per thousand. And that's for me taking everything out of the water possible, that's doing ten times the amount of treatment that you go to at a municipal water plant. And, and you know, for me to be charged nine dollars per thousand or, or, you know, we're here this. That's obscene.
We're here this year to address what we know is some concerns in this, and we knew that, and we voted, and we elected to have a workshop two months ago that we have been trying to get.
Well, I understand how it is, how hard it is to get money back too, but I, I do think that was, that was almost like planned thievery by a city to steal from your citizens.
Not individual, but a city.
Well, yeah, but, but a city, I mean, it almost looked like, you know, what are you gonna do, we're gonna reach in and rob you the quickest way we can. I just wanna, I wanna address that. I mean, that's what it looks like. And I, I see exactly what you're saying. Yeah. But I'll tell you what, today is what we needed in September, and it's what I needed. And let me explain what I'm talking about. We, as a council, and these guys up here, worked with this spreadsheet, we looked at this, we, you know, and I can't tell you how each one of our minds worked when, while we were analyzing all this. But we didn't get, you had, if you had been here, you might have actually seen some stuff we didn't see. Well, yeah, like I said, I mean, I, I, and, and it looks like when you guys did what we were trying to do, I mean, you saved the people who are on the, on the, on the base income level. But I, I think that what happened outside of kinda your scope of view got a little bit out of whack. And, and I think, I think you're exactly right. And, and again, the back billing only made it look worse in the month of, you know, in, in the highest water usage month you could do. I mean, it made it look just like you guys were. Here's what, here's what we, here's what everybody needs to understand too. I mean, despite whether, you know. And I do think, and I do think bringing ordinance to a council without an effective date is, you know, and that's. I learned, I personally learned a lesson there. I've never heard of that, and I've, I've been, I've been a million city councilman. Now, but listen, honestly, I feel like that this is exactly what we needed. Number one, we all got focused in on something and we miss, we missing things. Every single one of us, we have our, you know, we're volunteers, I mean, take this role, move up here, and you're gonna have the same, you're gonna have the same issues and, and the way you think and everybody's gonna have problems. Listen, man, I worked, I worked at plants, I'm all for infrastructure, you know, getting built up and, and doing things the right way. What I'm not for is just when you look at it and it, I, I mean, I, I just moved to a small town and I thought, man, what the heck? Y'all just reached into my back pocket for, you know, an extra six hundred dollars, I mean, you know, that's just not right. And that, and I. Without any notification of your, of grabbing it. And I mean, we'll bet you, there's a lot of that we did not perceive. We saw exactly what you just described. We saw down here, we saw hardly any high end users and not thinking, and I'm gonna kinda, I'm kinda speaking for myself too. Looking at my own bill and I watered my lawn, I think, there's hardly anybody that uses that much water down there. And then, lo and behold, it goes into effect and we figure out just who does use that kind of water.
Seventy percent, tough.
Yeah, with us, that was like a seventy, eighty percent increase. No, and I see that. I mean, that's just nuts. For a lot of people, that's a mortgage payment. Yeah.
Why y'all ignore the votes, the people that hired y'all to do the job?
Cause we're here to talk about water, dude.
I know, but what I'm saying is they ignore the vote and we have four hundred and ten people saying.
Well, I think that.
I think they just dropped that there.
No, that's all right, it's this one. That guy's got us here tonight.
Well, I knew that, but what I'm saying is, yeah, we're trying for the people, and now I watered my lawn.
I wish I would've looked at it previous to this, yes, I agree. This should have been all done before they ended the.
And they absolutely should have, if the last meeting just said, hey, listen, we're gonna go back and, we're gonna get rid of that, of that retroactive charge.
I agree.
No, and, and, no. And like I said, it's hard to get any city letting go a month.
But tonight, we're just here to do the water.
You have a question, ma'am?
Um, I wanted to get involved. My name is Barbie Griffin. I own County Country Home Care, we have Van Alstine, um, and I just wanted to shed some light on some things. Um, I'm not a resident here, but my patients are residents here. So where it doesn't affect my business, cause I have a sink and a bathroom, it affects several households that are under my care. Most of them are seniors, most, every one of them are on fixed incomes, okay? Um, before I go any further, I wanna say, I know each one of the people on the council and our city manager. Everyone's intentions were in the right place, okay? We could say stupid and, you know, you know, say ugly things, but every one of you have been standing up and saying, I made a mistake. I didn't look deep enough, I should have looked deeper, we've learned something. Every one of those positions are volunteer, I understand that as well. And our city limits are so small that even though the E D J is one of the biggest in the state of Texas, unless you live outside the city's limits, you don't even have the right to serve there. Which unfortunately limits, anybody that lives outside the city limits like you, that has infrastructural knowledge and things like that.
I live outside too.
No, I'm saying anybody else who want to have an opportunity to have an impact on our infrastructural growth and water utilities. You've just put your name on the ballot for May, I hope you know that. Like, you, you're gonna have a lot of supporters because what this council needs is expertise and knowledge. And our city limits are so small, you're only gonna get people that have been in your shoes, uh, infrastructural, I mean, I know that Mr. Moore comes from a lot of, uh, commercial building and apartments, multifamily housing. That kinda stuff, but our main problem in our city is infrastructural, is essential. You know, and maybe you're moving out of the city limits or not, but it's just unfortunate that the city limits are so tight and some of the people that have degrees and things like that, that can help with this water problem, own land. And there's only so much land inside those, those little city limits. So we've just shut the door on talent that could do something great with our city. I do believe that, that tax, overtaxing or over, uh, rate increasing the residents is a Band-Aid, it's gonna come off, it's gonna be a festering wound underneath. When the bull order happened, I am, I'm talking about the water. When the bull order happened, it affected our company, we were out having to deliver water to people, okay? We were delivering drinking water because our reds, our patients don't bribe, they're hometowns, okay? So my, my encouragement here is, uh, there's a lot of, uh, stress here, but I wanna speak for those seniors that, I believe that everybody knows y'all are trying to do a good job. If we can come up with some things that are outside the box with some of the ideas that you guys are coming up with, put an action list together, take the time to get some of the studies that we need. Cause I guarantee you, I work with the Frisco, Frisco, uh, Economic Development Corporation, companies like that. I guarantee you that they spend a lot more time, things have to get voted on several times, and extra sets of eyes have to look at things. And people will notice, those professionals will notice that contracts are not done correctly, things like that. There has to be a checklist and it gets voted on several times. I think if we do that and kinda have that safety net under big decisions like this, that we're gonna have a much more successful council. And it'll reduce the, the stress of you guys going after each other every, every time we see you guys get together.
Did your clients have big increases in water bills?
I've helped some of my clients pay their water bills.
I mean, if they're only using.
Yeah.
They should have gotten about four dollars a month.
They should have had no effect on us.
Thank God.
No, it went up on more than one, I have a lot of patients in the city. So, and, and not only that, but when you own a healthcare facility or a healthcare company and you're responsible for those patients and there's what they call emergency preparedness, the, the, uh, bull order was part of that. So we had to do long reports.
I'm just talking about the water rate increases today.
I understand, but the rate increases.
I thought we tried to keep it fairly low, that's why it's surprising.
Yeah, but, but again, you know, you went back and retroacted.
It's across the board.
They're gonna, they're only gonna be watering their grass anyway, they're gonna use five thousand gallons every month. They're probably the most stable people.
How do you know they're not watering their grass? Are they not, are they in the houses or are they in parks?
You know, I guess my problem would have been if they were watering their lawn, they didn't know before that thing came in there and whacked them.
My point for speaking is, is that the seniors that I took care of.
It's got submarine.
My point for speaking was, the seniors that I took care of, I'm speaking for several families, several individuals that are hometown. And none of them are angry like some of the other people here, cause they don't have the exorbitant bills, but they still feel like they can get talked to. Nobody's mad.
I can understand that, I just.
That's not my point for talking, nobody's mad, I'm just encouraging, the city thinks a little bit bigger, so there's some opportunities from some other, so you guys can get some of the other resources you need from some other people, other than just amongst yourselves. And in that way, as the city has to face other big decisions that require infrastructure, that, that some resources are available to you. Because this could happen with something besides just the water, that's all.
I did suggest that we, uh, look at freezing the water rate for people that were over seventy, if you were sixty-five and you were home stand, you have a wet freeze. When you were seventy, if you were still in that home stand, that your water rate would freeze at that. But that was not, felt like that was feasible.
Again, that's, I mean, I understand what that.
I'm just addressing seniors right now.
Thing is, that, this thing.
And I have done it tonight, if you won't listen, it really isn't so much the rate increase, it was the manner in which the rate.
Right, it was really.
That was just sleazy, I'm sorry.
So it's not the rate increase that is the majority of the complaints, it is the manner in which it was done and that it was charged for water. Well, that already used.
And, and I do think that on the upper tiers of that thing, you're gonna drive people, you're just not gonna water their lawn, so you're not gonna get the money you really wanted to get.
And you have the schools and, uh, some of the large things that were affected.
Oh, yeah, affected badly, yeah.
Going from three dollars and nineteen cents up to nine dollars, eight dollars and seven dollars is exorbitant.
And those things shouldn't have looked at.
Yeah.
The big challenge that I see, my husband's a commercial developer, the big challenge that I see is that when we've got as much of the negative publicity as Van Alstine for, for this, I mean, some bad things happen. Y'all are all here to try to correct it and I believe every single one of you are here to try to correct that. We're not gonna be able to bring the businesses to pay those water bills, to pay taxes with the market, with what we have going on, so where's the, we need corporations to come, bring employees, bring money, bring tax, uh, tax base. So that way, we've got big money coming in to fix our underground utilities.
Tell you now, the toughest thing is to go from a Frisco with one stoplight to a Frisco the way they are today.
Yeah, I lived up there, man.
Yeah, me, well, yeah, me too, and, and you know, to go from those, from that situation to that, and you know, we're not gonna be that far off in Van Alstine, I mean, you give it another ten years, we're gonna be in those same.
Frisco did that with bonds, they even do that with.
Well, again, yeah, I mean, I think there's different ways.
Don't we have access to anything that was, instead of all being on the, the residents, is there anything else available? Bond money or anything among those lines?
That question went there to Mr. Baker.
If you look at the, uh, the agenda, we have a Texas Water Development Board loan on drinking water and clean water available for us to start by tackling some of our larger infrastructure shortcomings. So, yes, we are looking at that, we're looking at low interest loans. But the main thing in, in what council, what we brought to council, what they worked on for two months, was a rate. was a rate structure that was going to take care of the immediate issues that we have from the neglect, overtime, and the issues that we're having.
So. Do you guys put safeguards in place to make sure that that money does go to those things? I mean, I'm just asking. I mean, do you, do you know that the, that the increased money here does actually go back to?
Well, it stays in the enterprise fund. We don't make, we don't make transfers into the general fund. It stays in, it stays in enterprise fund because our, our greatest shortcoming is infrastructure.
Stays in that.
Because you talk about growth, you talk about wanting to, this place to, to be ready for that growth, it isn't. And the majority of our wells, the majority of our infrastructure on the east side.
I guess I'm trying to figure out why we're still sticking to the wells when we got access to the water.
Well, and that's, and that's one of the presentations tonight. That's one of the presentations tonight.
Yes.
But one of the, one of the things you have to remember, these low interest loans are great. But you gotta pay them back. And that is, that's what will cause increases in rates is the payment on the bond. Yes, the bond will pay for the improvement, but the payment on the bond has to come out of rates.
It's gotta come somewhere, yeah.
So the, it's, it's great to borrow money at low interest.
I understand. Yes, that's true. Well, you still gotta pay.
Right.
Just, I just wanted, just a kind of a general educational bit. I, I've worked with Frisco from 2000 to 2007, so I'm, I'm familiar with what happened there. There are two types of bonds. One is a revenue bond, which is a bond that would be paid through the water rates. So the water rates would have to be adjusted to cover that. Another type of bond, which would have to be approved by the citizens at an election, is a bond that is paid through taxes instead of through revenues. And so you can also do a tax bond that is dedicated for those types of things. So you can have bonds funded by two different sources, either the property taxes or the revenues from the utilities.
I know there's been, like, talk about growth and how we're stifling growth in this community. Well, for everybody's information, I looked at, at the water rates in Hannah and the water rates in Melissa. And if you compare us to them at 5,000 gallons, at 10,000 gallons, at 40,000 gallons, we're the cheapest of the three towns. And so, I mean, now, I think when we get the industrial rates, then we're a little bit higher, I think. I, I didn't get back on doing those. But I, I just didn't have time to go back through them all.
So 40,000 gallons there at $9 per gallon?
Uh, no, it's actually 10.62 in one of them and it goes there at 4,000 gallons or something like that. I don't know. Uh, like Melissa, no, in Hannah, anything over 20,000 gallons, you're at 10.52 per gallon.
Wow.
And, uh, anything over, let's see, in Melissa, they get their highest ones, they're higher than us. Six, 1 to 1,000 is 500, 5 dollars, I mean, $4.93. 1, uh, 10,000 to 20,000, 6.86, where we're $4. Uh, then the next area from 20,000 to 60,000, the 8.17, where we're 6, 7 or 8, depending on which one of the things you're in. So when you go.
You know, it's funny because I, I compared that to, you know, all I have are my old bills and stuff. And my old bill was basically, I mean, my base rate was 53,000 gallons. You, you didn't pay anything more than $50 a month or anything up to 53,000. I mean, it was nothing.
What he, what he just read off last year, when we were doing budgets last year. When I told Mr. Baker, well, his rate study was done in 2008, that Mr. Flannery referred to. That's where we would have gone.
But they didn't do that overnight.
No, they did, they did a lot of that. They did a lot of that last, 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 the same time we were doing this one. They were raising theirs from $7 to $10. And, and $6.
You went from $3, you went from $3 to $9.
Yeah, I have no idea where they were at. And I have no idea where they entered it at the end of.
Yeah, my guess is.
I don't know. I have no idea.
Again, that wasn't just very bright.
You know, if those backlogs, Mr. Moore said, not one in this council has intentionally done anything. And you can call it gallons, but no, that was intentional.
Like I said, yeah, we don't think, we don't think you guys intentionally did it. But I mean, to do it and then to not say, okay, hey, we made a mistake.
And let's correct.
We want to have them do it. This is the first thing we've had.
Okay. So I, I thought there was a motion to do that last meeting.
There was a motion to do that last meeting.
There was a motion.
And it was voted down.
We didn't want, we want to fix it rather than just, you know, play a game.
Okay.
The motion was to, uh, last meeting was to, I believe it was to.
Cancel the law and go back.
Refund that last, the. Yeah, there was anything before October 1st. There were three motions. That was the big difference.
Right. That's what I remember.
And to repeal the, uh, ordinance 699 and to.
Yeah, and you guys weren't willing to do that.
No, no, no.
No, we're trying to.
And I'm not sure that you should.
Yeah. If we do that, then we can, I can choose it. Me personally, if I do that, then I feel like I've done exactly what all the previous councils have done, is pass it on to the next guy.
Right, yeah. But sooner or later, this has to stop.
You know, people may not like me next time. That's fine. I'm not running based on whether I get these cheap water rates. I'm running based on, I want to do what's right for the town in the long run, over the future, everything else. We did lower, everybody, nobody's saying anything about, we did lower your tax rate, but nobody cares. We actually, if you go look at your taxes, they went down for the city. But nobody happens to mention that, but we did something to do that.
Can you explain why the tax rate?
Yeah, we were forced to. We were forced to go down the tax.
Because your taxes were too high. I was gonna say, my, my problem with taxes here.
It's a one word answer. It's called capital. That's why the taxes were down.
Who cares?
That's why the taxes were down because of $45,000 or two councilors invested.
Right, okay.
That's why the taxes were down, not because we.
Yeah, not because we intentionally did anything.
Now, that, that is set by the president.
Is that gonna cover, because the one thing I've heard most everybody complain about, not most everybody, but a lot of people, was money for a meter reader. So everybody gets their meter red, not reds or however it may or may not have been done.
One of the, one of the proposals within the loan on, uh, the enterprise funding was for, uh, radio red meters, which wasn't going to blanket the whole town. It was going to be a jumpstart to implement, uh, radio red meters within a certain section of town. So that way, uh, some, some of the whole sections that have lines that run off the back alley, lines that run across people's property, lines to where our guys are having to go in people's yards.
No more dog bed metering.
What's that?
No more dog bed metering.
Well, just to where we're not having, we're not having that kind of issue with certain citizens and where we're, we're trying to start having sections of town that are radio red to lower our labor costs to keep the guys on line breaks because this is gonna be an ongoing problem until we get on top of it. Uh, but yeah, there, part of it was to buy a certain number of radio red meters in a, install them in the sections.
I'm glad you're understanding that because that's a concern to several people.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Did I interrupt?
No, you're good.
Okay, we have discussed regarding the utility rates established by ordinance number 699. If you will pull up the agenda, you will notice that it states discussion. So if there is a change or if, if the retroactive is changed, as Ms. Parker was talking about, a motion, but we do not have this down, this has not been put down as an act of item and would have to be placed on the next Tuesday's agenda. Uh, because it only states discussion, not taking any action on this, just discussion.
Mayor, what's gonna have to happen is the discussion is just, this is very similar to a budget workshop that we went through for two months. The discussion takes place, council does not take action because whatever decisions y'all choose to make, if the workings have to be modified, legal's not gonna be able to do that tonight. So when, instead of us getting a vote of council, we get a consensus of council, a feeling, and then we move forward to next Tuesday to take that along.
So even though it does not say action, I can ask for a consensus?
You can give direction as to what type of ordinance you would like to see in our packet to be an action item next Tuesday.
Okay. Um, there is, I don't know how to do this really. But if you're giving direction, we have not gone through all of the items that are on the agenda, but there is one item I would like to read to you, and that is item number five. And it's consider and make any action necessary regarding a review of the Texas Water Code, Section 13.187 regarding procedure and effective dates of a rate change. Now, this, this Texas Water Code doesn't apply to us. It only applies to co-op investors and others. But it is a real good guideline because if you will read in your packet, and I will read it to the audience, they have a guideline and a procedure that, um, I found very informative. It states, now stated? It states a utility may not make changes in its rates except by delivering a statement of intent to each rate payer. And we do have a newsletter now that goes out each month. And with the regulatory authority having a regional series, the effective date of the new rate must be the first day of the billing period and the new rates may not apply to service received before the effective date of the new rate. The statement and intent must include a billing comparison regarding the existing water rate and the new water rate computed for the use of ever how many gallons of water it will be. I think it should also be the sewer rate and the meter rate. And these are things that, uh, we really, just to say we're gonna change the ordinance, there, this is a good place to start with, a direction. And this is not even an, this is, it says take any action necessary. But actually, what number five does is give you a guideline of some time. Also, we have, uh, how it was done in Richardson this week and nothing bill. So that, and what you had brought up is an excellent guideline too. But I wanted to do, uh, number five now so that the audience would know that it was on the agenda and that it was a suggestion as to how we could do it in the future and how it could be included in a, a new ordinance if the council were still allowing to do so. In a revise 699. In a, in a. Or a new one. If the council decides to revise 699. So at this time.
Had 699 have been implemented that way, you wouldn't have had half the order.
That's right. Okay, uh, so at this time, I am told I can take a consensus of direction on ordinance 699. So I will start at the end, Councilman Moore. What is, what is your feeling for the direction for ordinance number 699? Have I stated that correctly, Mr. Baker?
I would say.
Mr. Moore?
I'd like to see. I'd like to see the, uh, can we put that spreadsheet back up?
Read spreadsheet.
Yes, ma'am. My biggest concern's on the highest, on the highest end. And, um, I know some of the others in council may have a better input on where we need to be. Because those were the numbers that couldn't be projected. I do, I do like the idea of the, um, what Richardson does, and I don't know how we implement that. But, um, I think the biggest thing is we also have to adjust the numbers to meet budget. So my, I guess my input is I want, I'd like to see us have a max, right, a, a max per gallon. And maybe somebody else has, uh, and then, but where that should be, but I'm thinking that it, it's probably the $5 or $6, uh, once you get to 20,000 or 30,000 gallons, $5 or $6 where I think it's probably gonna need to shut off and not increase.
Uh, you said as Richardson is doing, does that mean that you would like to see.
For the sewer.
The Richardson's ordinance regarding this?
Well, for the sewer, where they, they use that.
Three month structure.
That's three months.
So we would need to see there.
Order something about the, the idea.
I know that would take more work. It's not something that would be easily this very moment, but.
But that is the direction you align.
Just a front, just a front information for you. The thing they're referencing is called winter averaging.
Winter averaging?
Winter averaging. It's called, and you use the months of December, January and February typically. Some cities modify that a little bit, but that's the norm. You take the three months of winter and, and you take the average of those three months and that's what you build the customer during the, uh, during the summer months.
For sewer.
For sewer only.
This is for sewer only.
Right, but the impact.
The remaining quarters of the year.
Well, all the other months of the year, yeah, during, during the summer months. The, uh, the impact you're gonna have though, that you have to look at is how does that decrease your revenue? Because you got a specific revenue requirement that was used to calculate your rates. So if you adjust something that's gonna decrease your revenue, then you got to offset it somewhere else.
Yeah.
But this does not affect anything else that we're discussing?
No, I just want to make sure you, you have the right term to use. If you're gonna be discussing it, you.
Winter averaging.
Winter averaging.
It's only down, it's only down on residential properties, right?
Correct.
Not down on industrial.
If that, well, if industrial has irrigation, yeah.
But, I mean, industrial could use budgets no matter what.
Well, the whole, the whole concept behind it is to take away the cost of the water you're using outside for irrigation purposes. So it doesn't matter whether you're a commercial business or industrial, you actually have irrigation.
Okay.
And you're watering outside, that water's not going through the sewer.
Yeah, we're the same.
Yeah, so it'd be the same amount.
Unless you've got a business that's seasonal, like a water, like a water company, a bottled water company or something like that, where they're gonna have their seasonal months around to the hot part of the year.
Yeah, tree farm.
Yeah. You gotta, you gotta be careful because there may be some seasonal businesses that's still impacted.
Where, where do you recommend picking up that deficit?
Where do you recommend picking up the deficit?
That that would create.
If you're taking the revenue out of sewers, you have to adjust the, the sewer rates. The minimum bill would have to go up.
So it has to go back to the base rate, right?
The base rate, correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Jennings?
Uh, as far as ordinance 699, I would still not, not be in favor of any full repeal of 699. I am in favor of, fully in favor of going back and looking at the rate structure as current is set, particularly on the 10,000 gallons, well, probably 20,000 gallons up. I do like the winter averaging. I think it's, I think it would be good. It has its pros and cons because I don't have to be rate adjusting particularly on. I guess you can just, well, use the same rate with its, uh, consumption of discharge. You'd have to look at the, the rates to try to adjust the revenue loss, some, some revenue loss, but it's tough to tell what that is. I do have one question for you.
Yes.
It, it, I've, I've not been able to find this. You probably show me this quick. On the depreciation, where does that fall back in your calculation over in your revenue stream? Where it picks up? I see where, do you get the average per gallon? You see the, you go to the, yes. Okay, now, when we look at the.
Hard. You're talking about the depreciation, no?
Yeah, the figure of 97, you go back to your rate comparison. Where we have 94,500 for depreciation. For those here with depreciation, that, that is where we, that is our capital reserve. That's where we're trying to build capital reserve. What I cannot find is in your spreadsheet where that calculation comes back in as your revenue. I see where you're getting your average get per gallon based off of total consumption in the whole of the city.
I'm not sure what that number is down there.
It's the same amount, 94,500. I'm not sure why it's, why it's brought down.
Yeah, here's the decrease.
That's not about what I did.
The blue?
Yeah, and it just shows we brought, we were just.
So they could just see it?
So they could see it. But it correlates back to those two sheets.
Okay, so it, it didn't change the calculation?
No, it's up.
Because what you're seeing at right here, that's just with a reference point, so you don't have. don't have to scroll up to see it.
Okay.
It's not, it's not calculated into the-
So it's still just included in your-
Still put it in the rate.
Okay, I got you, I got you.
Still put it in the rate.
And then the only question I have is the hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred, that is actually divided by a thousand, which is a hundred and eighteen million something gallons for total consumption per year of that. And then you, you base that off an average gallon for the two seventy-five, right?
Hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred.
That's-
That's actual gallons billed for that, for that, uh, year, for the, uh, that's actual-
In millions.
In millions, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got you.
But we break it down by thousands, but that's how you feel.
But it's real by thousands.
That's correct.
I got you. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I have a question before y'all get too much farther. I, I guess you've had a few months of this billing, right? How is, how is this trending compared to what you thought it was gonna be?
Formed toward it.
Okay, so you're on, you're on toward?
Formed toward.
Yeah.
Mr. Plank? Uh, I would like to see us look at the water rates again. I, I, the one that I guessed, I mean, I just was playing around with was the four dollars being three, the five dollars being four, each one going down a dollar to give an adjustment to the, to the higher usage once, uh, and, uh, the depreciation cutting it out. I've sensed, you know, talked to people and decided maybe that's not a good idea to cut it all the way out, but I, because there, there's only things like pumps and things like that that die. But, uh, you know, I'm hoping that we'll get the money back from somewhere else, but it's done with a hope rather than with a fact or anything else. I would like to have us put something into our, like you presented on that one, part of that document that says that this is the way, and we probably need to implement anything that we come up with that's gonna have a date that affects what you did before, I don't know what, whether it's, I guess maybe price would be a possibility. I'm trying to think of things that would be possibilities. Probably water is the only one that we have that's really that way, but, that we put in something like that?
Change the procedure.
And change procedure.
Set a procedure.
And, and I can see, I can see, you know, I, I, it's a hard one to say because you hate to get money back, but-
I've never seen a city do it.
Well, yeah. I would like to see us make some adjustments on that. I, I don't know whether, I, I don't think that I would like to have us send out checks to them. I would rather have us, you know, cut back on certain amount for a while. So, so that, so that, you know, that may be a whole lot harder process to do. She's thinking her head, yes. I just said that's what I like to see, but doesn't mean anybody's gonna look for it.
Okay. Then let's start.
I'm sorry, too. I, I'm in favor of looking at the, uh, ordinance and how we establish or implement the rate next time.
Procedure.
Procedure.
Yes, the procedure. Okay, Mrs. Stover?
Okay, uh, I'm interested in that winter averaging. Another thought that had been proposed to me was, uh, irrigation meters. Now, I don't know how they work. Uh, what is the, how's an irrigation meter work?
A lot of people do have those in a lot of cities. Uh, it's just a separate meter that the customer will have installed, and the irrigation would go there, so the meter reader would read both meters, the irrigation meter and the, and the other.
So that would be more.
We have one.
It's a cost, too.
Yeah.
That was-
We have, we have a meter, we have, we have, one of our meters doesn't get any other thing, just the water.
Right, so it's not given to the sewer.
It's not given to the sewer, I think.
Mr. Stover, that was a-
That's the one with the seven hundred.
That was a common practice in Dallas, where I came from, from Dallas. And what that does, it gives the customer the ability to only use water for irrigation and know that they're not billed for sewer for that water. Now, it does cost money because they have to pay to install that meter, so-
They have to buy the meter.
They have to buy the meter and pay to have it installed, and the customer has to pay for that. But then their benefit is they're only billed for their sewer consumption based on the other meter, and they're not billed sewer consumption for the water meter. And if you're a large user, like a school district or a school facility or something like that, there's a benefit to that. That even in the winter, you may still use water that would show up on your sewer bill.
So that would be some, an additional option that we could give the, uh, citizens, either an irrigation meter or, uh, meter-
You say you already-
Winter averaging.
Yeah, I, I mean, I effectively have that. I bought, my house is on kind of two lots.
It's the Benton, it's the old Benton house.
Basically, yeah, basically, one of my, one of my meters basically comes in the back of the property and runs nothing but the, but the irrigation.
So it's only tied to the-
It's only tied to the irrigation, and you guys only bill me the water on that one. I get no sewer, no nothing else on it.
Oh, okay, then we are doing that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. You're right.
And this is something that could be suggested to the school, is it not?
You have several irrigation meters.
The school does have the irrigation meters.
The reason why winter averaging-
So about how many are in this panel? Do you know? How many have irrigation meters already?
McDonald's has irrigation, Jack in the Box, Brahms, the ISD on almost all of their campuses. The football field has irrigation, their practice field has irrigation. Most of the larger businesses have irrigation.
They all have meters?
Yes, meters, they're separate, separate meters.
They're similar, huh?
Yeah, there's a few of them.
You still have two meter deposits.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, you still pay the same fee, you don't use the others.
One of the reasons the winter averaging came about was so that people who didn't want to pay for two meters and have two taps and all that would still have the, some kind of amendment or adjustment, not paying for sewer. The same thing happened in City Houston and X Keywood. A lot of the people there decided to go ahead and get a separate irrigation meter and pay for seven, three or four months because City Houston did not have winter average. So it's an option you can give your residents, they can go either way. If they want to pay for another meter, another tap and all that, or even just use the winter average.
Good, so we could offer both, either or to the, or-
We already do, apparently.
Well, some, but how many other people know about it? You know, it's the knowledge, getting the word out, and informing our citizens of what is available.
Do you still have a base rate?
We as a residential only have it because we have two lots. We have it because we have irrigation. So the corporations would have it because of their irrigation. It's really more commercial.
Yeah, it's really more for commercial than residential.
Yeah, you sell the base rate.
There's a problem, people may also-
You sell that base rate, you get running water out of it.
They got trips, isn't it?
Okay.
Two meters would cost you as much as water.
Do you have a question, just, yeah, I'm interested. Do you all use water all throughout the year, or do you have months where you have zero water going through?
Oh, I've got many months where I got zero going through, and I still pay my fifty-dollar bill or sixty-dollar bill, whatever it is. So, yeah, there's months that I pay. Yeah, there's a lot of months that I pay, you know, I don't use any water out of it.
But it's basically, basically-
Yeah, I do use water out of it.
What was your suggestion, Jennifer?
Seven hundred bucks, maybe.
I said, I was gonna suggest suspending the town for, you know, the winter.
Sure.
Well, what she's talking about is basically used for commercial.
In, in their case.
Well, in their case it's residential, but basically it is commercial in that that's what the school would use, the different schools, if, if, they have the biggest benefit.
Yes.
There's several residents use thirty to fifty thousand gallons, and that was more than what their actual water usage is, it was actually irrigation. Now, at the same time, if they watch their yard, they'll see water running out into the street curb, so they were overwatering it, and so they were paying water and a drainage for sewer.
Yeah, again, you know, I mean, I, it's kind of funny because, you know, I've heard the council say this several times, they're kind of confused conservation with, with revenue, and, and you gotta be very careful because what you're gonna find out is, I think what you're gonna see with the way you've got your structure set up today, is that when you get to the months of May, June, and July, your tracking is gonna start going back flat or negative compared to where it's supposed to be, because you're gonna have people conserving water in order not to pay those, those prices. And that's where you're gonna screw up what you got at the time. And, 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 you know, so I mean, I, I guess what I'm saying is, you have to be very careful here. If we have enough water as a city, and, and I think we do, then, then what you end up finding now is that you don't have that. The reason your tracking is good right now is because basically your tracking is, is, you did it the last month, you could possibly do it, you stole money from people by, by back taxing or back charging them. And then, and then you went back to the flat months.
Can we show you where, that's the question I asked a while ago on a hundred and eighteen million gallons?
That, that would not be the case in your situation. It has been for a lot of cities because they built their, their revenue stream on the volume of water, and we did not do that here. So if, if people do cut back and conserve, which is what we hope they do, then it won't negatively affect your revenue stream.
How's that possible?
It's because, it's because-
I need to see some math on that.
Okay, it's because if you look at the five thousand column, at the two dollars and fifty cents per, per thousand, when you go, that's what I asked about. When you go over and look at the total sales for the city last year of a hundred and eighteen million, that's where that base figure comes from. That two dollars and fifty cents is based off of selling a hundred and eighteen million gallons of the city.
But that's gonna leave it flat?
No, it's-
Dude, come on, that doesn't work. I mean, that's, that's just, that's not even a good map.
You should bring that up.
Mr. Jennings, can I ask, you say you got budgeting on the, on paper?
Yeah, I may get it.
I do that now. So your revenue may go down on the, on the-
Hopefully the cannibalism.
You see that ninety-six percent?
Difficult to see, it was a lot.
Yeah, it, she's got it, I can't say. But anyways, it's ninety-six percent is in that, in that little column, and, and that's what we use to, to calculate the minimum bills. So ninety-six percent of revenue is being generated from the minimum bill. Therefore, the overall revenue is not affected in any great measure by increase in water cost.
Then why did you jack the, then why did you jack the upper usage rates up so high? If, 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 if your base bill is already covering the, the thing-
I can answer that.
Okay?
The answer is that we want to encourage conservation. And that's what you use to encourage conservation.
Why do you want to, why do you, why do you want to encourage conservation in a city that doesn't have as much water as you want?
The reason why we want to encourage conservation because it's gonna decrease your demand for capital later on. Yeah, by capital, I mean new plants, new water plants, new pipes. And so if you don't decrease that, what's gonna happen, what is happening across the state of Texas and the United States, you're gonna have, gonna sell more bonds. Now, you gotta increase the taxes on the residents for that additional capital. Everybody, I'm sure is aware of the fact that Texas is growing tremendously through population because everybody wants to move, it's a great place to live. That puts, increases demand on our water infrastructure. Where you kind of offset that is decrease consumption by people watering the streets. Like the gentleman just talking about some. That's the reason for the tiers increase, for conservation, but we cannot risk the revenue on that because hopefully people will conserve. If we don't do it that way, then when you do conserve, they're gonna go back and raise the rates because you conserve.
That, that leaves me the question, then, if you're, if you're expecting ninety-six percent of what you had, and we need infrastructure repairs, you're not gonna get that out of ninety-six percent. It's gotta be greater than a hundred percent.
That's not for, that's not for infrastructure repair. The ninety-six percent is not for infrastructure repair, that's for operations. So if you scroll down, we'll show you exactly what the operations are to, to the top, Jennifer?
We're counting on the upper tier users to use more water to fix the infrastructure.
A little bit more, please.
You're not gonna get that because they're gonna conserve a lot.
Okay, yeah, so these, these, these line items right here is what we call operations. This is just to run the day-to-day business of the water, of the, this is just water, right? Of just water. So this is the actual line item names, and this is what it costs per year to run each one of those line items. That has nothing to do with your infrastructure. In terms of building a new, uh, line, new plants, new sewer plants, that's a whole different hour. You can do that through revenue bonds, through, uh, debt service.
But that's what this was sold as, is that we're doing this for new infrastructure. And now you're telling me that's not the case.
Well, you do have some up here, like, but it's maintenance and repair of water lines.
You can't have both sides of this argument. Listen, you can only, you can only gain revenue by-
It's right here in black and white. It's no argument at all. It's right here in black and white. Maintenance and repair water lines, hundred and twenty thousand.
Correct.
That's maintenance and repair, not-
That's not new infrastructure.
That's maintenance and repair of the existing infrastructure.
Right, but that's not new infrastructure. We need new infrastructure, right?
Maintenance and repair of water storage tank.
But this is sold for new infrastructure.
Maintenance and repair pumps, wells, and motors. Maintenance and repair of water meters. So when they say infrastructure, that's what they're referring to.
Right.
But that's not typically what we're talking, what we think about.
We need new.
That's the lower your stories, and that's presentation that's coming.
Now, here's a, actually, we're talking about the new labor, right now, this is-
So this is that's where we exist. Maintain our, our city?
So this would be no different if you were at your home budget and you say, I need a new water pump in my car, so I'm gonna put it in my maintenance line item for a new water pump. I need new tires.
So new items are in the repair line? You're saying new items are in the repair line?
No, this is-
That's just maintaining of the system.
It could be new, that's safe, that's safe for a pump for a sound. If they need a new pump, that pump could be either repaired, or we have an existing pump, or he may decide it's time to buy a new pump.
Right.
So it may be a new pump in there, but it's different sort of maintenance. You're replacing something you already have.
But what's saying on your, on your, on your Excel spreadsheet, anything that's new is in that, those line items.
Correct.
If you have its own line.
It would be just like if you bought new tires for your car. Actually, it's maintenance. It is a new tire, yes, but it's maintenance.
Oh, you're making a new car.
You've already accounted for it.
I can't hear, I'm sorry.
One at a time.
Six inch line has been leaking for about four to six months. Which one of those lines show that?
That would be maintenance and repair of water lines, number twenty-five.
Been leaking, water's running out of it right now. That was mine right now.
I can't address that.
You asking where's the, where the cost is gonna come from to pay for that line, to replace it?
Yeah, but it's been leaking six months, you gonna pay for that water?
Oh, that I couldn't tell y'all.
If, if what column would be, now that we're trying to-
We can go.
Drilling water and taking it out of the ground. We do it whenever we want, it's off.
We were putting in sixty-six hours. I'm, I'm looking for vials, ten different vials located on the city.
I believe we have to get, for the water we take out of the ground.
It'll cost you about forty thousand.
Or we're doing the near future.
I may do.
What category does that, does that-
Is that a, is that a same district thing?
Is it in there?
Yes, sir. Six cents per thousand, state. What's that for? Contract, what's that? Contract services.
Contract services.
Okay, so a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars?
That's probably-
Is it, what, we paid to get the water out of the ground? That we didn't pay in the back?
Six cents per thousand.
Okay, there's for an example for you. The one hundred and sixty, seventy-three thousand dollars is for, is for us to pay the state for us?
No, sir, it's, it's a portion of it. Engineering, there's a number of other things.
Okay, so that's part of it, to take, to take water out of the soil and use it. That we've been paying nothing for in the back. Now, so that's one of those increases things that you're gonna have to, somebody's gonna take that water, the city can't do it, so they gotta pass that fin on for, for something like that.
Well, I understand all that. The part I don't understand is if we're just gonna maintain the system that we have with the rate increase that we just put in place, we're gonna be talking about this next year. the system that we have with the rate increase that we just put in place, we're gonna be talking about this next year.
And the year after, and the year after that, the year after that.
There's, something else has to be done in order to, to improve-
This is not gonna be fixed overnight. We have some long-term infrastructure that may lack. And it is going to take a lot of money. It's gonna take a lot of time.
I understand that the only way this town is gonna be able to afford to make those kind of repairs is to attract people to live here. And grow the taxes.
I agree.
And, and so that'll-
And that's why we showed you exactly what Anna and Melissa and Hal, other cities that have similar debt to us, are paying. We're not trying to get outside of that box.
You talk about, we have plenty of water. We lost two wells in the last two months. One still down. I spent forty-eight thousand dollars, oh, twenty thousand, bud. Get one well going last week.
And Pat was-
Yes.
Pat was talking about water that was running. That water continues to run because there's no shut-off valve in it. And it's quite, said he, how many are you going to put in? Ten?
We're looking at ten vials for two lighthouses.
Ten houses, ten places. They have no, they have no way to shut that water off at this time.
You shut the whole town off, just like E D L rubber gate.
Yeah, that's a lot of water. I put down all of it.
What have you shut the whole, out of, out of six inch line in your form?
Now, what he's saying is he hasn't, that is, we'd not be able to fix that this year.
I would, I could do a calculation on it really easy. I mean, we calculate. What we try to sell is a hundred and eight, is a hundred and eighteen million. We may produce a hundred and fifty million. Uh, the leak that we had, uh, October tenth was over a little, uh, two, almost twenty-one. Uh, two million and something, uh, thousand gallons, uh, two, two million gallons, over two million gallons. And then, and then September, we had an uplift for another million and a half.
Well, Steve, that was about, about my head.
We sell that, you said, Steve?
Ma'am.
We sell, you said we sell it.
The hundred and eighteen million is what we sell.
That's what that bill out in the meter, and then what they produce, the difference of the twos is, is what they lose, that's, that's lost from the piping and lost from other things.
We're at about thirty percent.
Do we sell our water?
Wow.
What, what should have, I mean, this probably be a giveaway. What should him say? I mean, Mr. Givens, could you give us the statewide average on lost water produced? Well, it's not just, uh, state wa, state, state, once you get over fifteen percent, the state gets involved, that's, that's considered a hard. They like to see it around seven percent or less.
I was gonna say, most cities are at eighty-nine as well.
We're, we're aware of that.
Now, some of that is used in operations, such as flushing, things like that.
Right.
You always might have something.
This ain't gonna, this ain't gonna be a good thing. I mean, you take the consideration, once a month, I'm required to flush it, ever did in, I, I'm probably looking at eighty to a hundred thousand gallons a month that I have to flush. Um, into the drain by state water.
Can I ask a question for clarity? Did we get fined by the state on a water issue?
No.
Sewer issue.
But it was not on discharge application. It was on improper operations.
Wow.
Like, like a maintenance, like of oversight?
I, I've been here a year and-
It's gotta be a lot to have T D Qs on for that. What happened?
Uh, the U V system wasn't working properly. The clarifiers weren't working properly. Uh, one pump, air pump, um-
They weren't working properly, we weren't working properly?
Nobody did maintenance. When I got here, we, most people didn't know what grease down was. Uh, so that gives you a little indication. Right now, I'm needing a RAS pump. We're working off of the air pump system. There's, I can't get good returns back from the clarifier.
Turn out to the sludge, I'll be a centrifugal pump, you sit it there and run back.
And so, well, that's what I proposed in this long, like, two hundred and sixty-five thousand is to get a RAS pump system.
Steve, do we have anybody in there who wants to realize?
I, I got four sure lots.
If you take care of the plant out there.
I have a class A in wastewater. Adam has a class C. Uh, Justin has a class D. I did have a class C op, uh, C water and wastewater operator be, just one day said it didn't come in or nothing. Sent me an email saying it's wasted.
So you do have somebody to take care of the plant now?
Adam's out there twenty, uh, eight hours a day.
When you first come here, you didn't have nobody to take care of the plant?
No, obviously I haven't contracted that. I've, since I've been here, we've reduced our dependency on D U T A out there. Uh, where, last month's bill was eight hundred dollars, where I was spending five thousand, six thousand dollars. But we getting our plant closer. Uh, there's still some more issues out there that we have to deal with. Uh, biggest problem I have is, um, probably thirty-five percent ash, and that's from, uh, infiltration through the system. Uh, and that, that mess, that causes my, uh, sludge. Leave a lot of silt and a lot of minerals.
How close did you get to having that a hundred percent out there?
Uh, probably two years.
So what you're saying is we running pipe tractors, fluid plant now, about?
Uh, we're running, uh, I mean, of course, per gallons, I mean-
No, no, what I'm talking about is far as being capable.
We're, we're in compliance right now.
Okay.
Uh, and it's a struggle.
Yeah, I know it is.
Uh, but we're in compliance. We, the last inspection we had, we were, uh, well in compliance. There was no violations, no notations. But anybody's been through a T C Q, they'll say, well, we did notice this, this tank over here wasn't quite level. And so we had to have it calibrated.
Well, are we gonna have to increase our school plan, do you think?
Someday.
I mean, how many years we off to that?
What was, what was the, what was the design of it? What's it doing today?
Nine point five.
And what's it doing today?
Uh, we hit a eight hundred thousand, uh, tape, uh, last week. And that was due to ice and snow and warm. That's how high my infiltration rate is.
Wow.
That's very high. Okay, back to ordinance number six ninety-nine. I'd love you-
I'm not finished.
You're not finished?
I'm not finished.
Let's get back to the ordinance.
I brought up the irrigation meters and we went off into, um-
Wastewater.
Everything else. Okay, I would, uh, like to see a retroactive refund because I think with, uh, we need to do the new procedures, develop the new procedures that we give an effective date, when it'll take place, and be able to notify the citizens far enough in advance. And I, I do feel very strongly that a retroactive, you know, that we refund that, uh, the August to September water rate that we, uh, charge the customers. Uh, I, we have under depreciation, what ninety-four thousand five hundred. I think that until we can get things going, that needs to be lowered. Uh, and I, you know, Billy, I think is in agreement with that too, but, uh, that's a little high for the situation that we're in.
Of course, then we just saw him send forty thousand of his twenty thousand dollars. Which the other twenty would've keep out of that, so.
Okay.
And, uh, that, uh, let's see. So we developed new procedures, and we reduced the rate on the high ends, you know, on thirty thousand, sixty thousand gallons. I think that is, uh, to me, it's just out of sight and, and wrong, and just like the school had said, that while they're going about other ways, it would be the equivalent of two teachers' salaries. Then, uh, one thing that was suggested to me was that, uh, we include the first two thousand gallons in that minimum rate, which would help with the, uh, people who don't use, who are on fixed incomes or unemployed or whatever.
Low usage.
Low, yeah. And that we revise, uh, totally revise ordinance six ninety-nine.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Smith, Councilman Smith?
One, one thing I'd like to point out on this page that's up there right now is the take or pay for a hundred and sixty-one thousand. The city has to pay a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars for water we do not get. We have to either take it or pay for it. We could use that water and eliminate expense on the other side. That, that's, you were talking about, we have plenty of water. We pay, and that is on the CGMA take or pay, a hundred and seventy-one thousand. That went into effect from two thousand and seven, I think is when, when that, when it, when the first payment was made. That's an expense that the city has that we're stuck with until we start using that, that water. That, that, I just want to-
Will you say, will you say that was for giving the water from?
From the-
The pipeline?
From Lake Levon Water.
Lake Levon.
We, we could use that and eliminate all of the cost of, of taking water out. We could eliminate that, uh, uh, part of that hundred and seventy-three of not having to pay for water we take out of the ground.
Is that an option when you have a, when you have a, a well go down?
No, because the T C Q has, I had to apply for a permit two seven. Uh, we're not set up for chloramines. Uh, the water is treated a minimum of the pipeline, and then we have to treat it to come out.
There is an expense once we start using that. And we also, once we start using lake water, we have to abide by all of the restrictions. If there's a, if there's a water restriction, we have to abide by that. When we use groundwater, I, as I understand, we don't have to abide by those, those regulations. So that, that's something that we need to look at. I just wanted you to see, since that was up there. I think we need to-
We pencil those rights, but we don't really even have a tap into it.
Yes, we have that. We have that, we don't use it. Well, if, you know how chloramines affect certain levels. Certain part of our water lines are ironed. All right, so, uh, at the same time, we could actually isolate part of our system.
I was gonna say, can you just isolate that to the groundwater?
But it'd be strictly to Georgetown. Uh, and we-
You know, but they've got newer lines that are probably plastic.
It's all plastic, but I mean, it's-
Still got bad water.
It's, um-
It ain't gonna taste like this, okay?
And they already set up to do that.
Yes, it is.
Why are we not doing that?
And, and the rest of town won't. And we have options for this.
Sir, make your end.
Direction.
Direction from the county.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I just wanted you to be aware of that expense that we have, that we pay for actually. Plus, we're making payments on the bond to pay for the water line. Now, we have, that, that, that bond went into effect in two thousand and seven. We're paying interest only, and this was the wisdom of somebody in the past. In two thousand and seven, we started making interest-only payments, and we will make interest only until twenty twenty-five, and then we will start actually paying on the principal. So in twenty twenty-five, after we've been making interest payments all this time, we still have the same amount of principal. Those, those are some of the factors that we have to deal with, that, that, that are not always exposed or shown to the public. I, I would like to see the recalculation of taking the, the, making five dollars the highest rate, clear across. I would like to, to see what effect that has and put it back into base rates. Base rates, you're guaranteed your money. And I said this a couple of years ago, if you raise base rates, it's gonna be, you're gonna hear spock in it. But you're guaranteed to have that income. People, if you raise the rates, people are gonna reduce consumption, and they're talking about, that's a good idea in, in a conservation mode. But the fact is, on a budget, if you raise rates, you're gonna lower, you're gonna lower your income.
Right.
I would like to see the depreciation taken out, even though our auditor suggested and recommended that we have that in there just in case something happens, and to let that fund build up. It was her recommendation that we do that. I'd like to see that taken out. And then I would like to see the expectation of new homes, which you see on that page of forty-five. When we're only selling one permit, according to the firm that reports this, we're selling one house per month and have for the last several months. There's no way we're ever gonna get to forty-five. It, it's, it's physically impossible to build forty houses in three months or four months. I'd like to see the rates go to five dollars, could say anything, five E to cap. Put that and see what happens. I'm not saying that that's, that's the ultimate answer, but put it back into base rates and see where, see what that does to base rates. Everybody has to pay their share. My, I, last, at the last council meeting, I had a, a, a twelve-month reading of my account from the restaurant. When, when everybody else was paying all these huge bills, mine stayed the same.
But you weren't a high-end user?
No, because, but I should, no matter who I am and how much I use, I should, I should pay my share of that increase. And it's easy to say, everybody pays a little bit more, but my bill did not go up. My consumption stayed pretty close to the same. This month, it was, it was still eighty-five dollars. So we need, we need to see what happens to the base rates. We need to adjust that. We can do that. We can make that calculation and, and put five clear across the house up there, take out the ninety-four five, and, and put the, the impact fees, numbers of lots, back down to no more than twelve because we can't, that our, our averages, our history tells us that we're gonna build one house.
Yeah, I mean, guys, I, you know, I'm not, I'm not sitting here saying I don't wanna help you guys with infrastructure, 'cause I do. I want, I want this town to be able to grow, and the only way you can do that is have wastewater and water plants at work. My issue was, in the way it was done.
As a customer.
Well, and, and of course, the, the, Billy needs to go back to the fifteenth of, of October instead of the fifteenth of August.
Yeah, I mean, that's a part of the gotcha.
That is at a minimum. It needs to go-
And I do think that you're gonna hurt yourself on that upper end of the curve by, by keeping that number up around nine dollars 'cause you're gonna have people who would, who would normally, I, I don't mind buying some water. And I don't mind buying it at a higher rate, but I'm not gonna buy it nine bucks. I'm just gonna let my, my yard go brown. You know, call it a day, and what they're gonna end up doing is seeing that's a lack of revenue, and you need revenue.
Right. That's where if you move it back to base rates, you're guaranteed your income.
Right.
And, and that's, that's one of the things I talked about a couple of years ago, and we chose to do more on the consumption part. When you raise rates, consumption's gonna go down. Revenue goes down. If you put it on base rates, it's hard, as hard as that is for a lot of people to accept that your base rate's gonna go up by ten dollars a month, you're guaranteed that income. The only way you could not have that income is if somebody turns the meter off and moves.
Well, and then you get the extra income if somebody actually uses more water.
Right.
Okay, thank you very much for your input. Carrie, did you say you had one more thing quickly?
We've talked about conservation, and one of the things that I was asked is, why doesn't Van Alstine have anything like during the summer that we, uh, don't, uh, have watering on certain days, or for, you know, even numbers and other days for odd numbers?
We've done that before, but it has not been necessary.
Because we have ground water.
Yeah, if we end up having that pipe, we have to, right?
Yeah, that's hard.
Because then you're part of the conservation of everybody else.
If you go to, if you go to G M T A, it's gonna be dictated by mechanics. Now, if you put a, if you put a drop in that water for Lake Levon, you're heading with all the well water.
We're, we're part of their system, and we're governed by the laws.
But that would be part of the city, and it's on that water, is that correct?
If you only, if you only set it to one part of the city, then absolutely only that part of the city.
That's two systems.
Okay, thank you very much for your input from the audience and the council. I have to say, because the next thing we're going to do is consider and take any action necessary regarding establishment and extension or partnership policy. But first, on this, uh-
I think we need to have, actually, part of doing, to start doing this.
Well, what we, I was going to suggest, I was gonna keep getting here, was that we get a list of all of the suggestions that have been made by the council. I do not believe that a resolution or an ordinance of any kind can be drawn up in a week. We need a copy of all of the suggestions that each one of the council members, that Mason and I, have put together for an ordinance. And then, can we not do that?
We'd have to have another work session, man.
Yeah, we need another work session, so I would suggest-
It's one.
No, but I'd just hate to see us dragging this.
No.
We promised them two minutes.
Okay, I'm sure the idea.
While we have Mr. Givens here, and he's traveled all the way from Houston, I would suggest that we play with this worksheet now and get a rate and a depreciation that everyone can agree to, that covers our budget. We'll put it in an ordinance and bring it back to you. If we can do it by next week, we will, or February, where we can have another special meeting this month to get it passed.
Okay, this one to be a consensus, because it was not, but then is anything else?
Right, a consensus on a rate, and then we bring in ordinance that has the rate that we all, that council agreed upon, and you approve.
Well, there's more than just the rate that has been suggested, the changes. The procedure was also, several other things were.
Can we throw one thing out there that wasn't discussed on the spreadsheet, just for consideration? Listening to what you were saying, is if you put that max out there and a guaranteed, uh, cap for each incremental use, why wouldn't you consider taking that from five to ten to twenty? Why wouldn't you take that from five to ten to fifteen to twenty to twenty-five to thirty to thirty-five, and make each one of them blocks a little bit smaller? And what you would do there is you pick up additional revenue for everybody that's, if I'm using nineteen thousand, I'm under that twenty cap. So as you spread that rate out a little more, and you set a five-dollar cap from two fifty to five bucks, and then spread that out in, in five thousand gallon increments all the way to the end. Um, and, and yeah, it might cost some of them a little more if, if they're somewhere between the ten and the twenty now.
Again, it's a, it's a-
Put, put it in five thousand gallon increments, gonna make it a little fairer for everybody. And, and I'm not opposed to, I'm not opposed to paying for, you know, water, and I'm not opposed to paying for infrastructure that the city needs. Uh, I just think it needs to be a, and, and like you said, a little more, a little more evened out.
Well, everybody needs to pay their share. And, and as tough as that's gonna be for some people on fixed income, that's a hard, that's a easy thing to say, but it's a more difficult thing to implement.
I don't think people have a problem paying their share.
I, I don't think the attribution of this issue is fair.
You know, one of my things is, is-
How often do you get told about? To answer that question, here's your usage and your number of customers in each of these increments. So, you know, the twenty, you know, five to ten, if you go ten to fifteen, you only talk about a hundred and eleven users that are fit in that range, so.
That's ten percent of the total.
That's ten percent of the total. And then you can see, and after you get down to thirty, then it's nominal, after that, the number of users that use that, so.
I can kinda see it, but I, I follow what you're saying. I understand why you did what you did. I just believe that, that it would be, it would be beneficial to pick up those users that are between, uh, ten and twenty, or between twenty and thirty. Uh, and maybe more so between ten and twenty, uh, at a different rate.
Right.
Uh, because they're gonna be charged a ten thousand gallon rate, when really they're probably closer to the twenty. And that's probably right where I'm gonna fall, so I'm gonna probably, maybe I'm shooting myself in the foot here, but I still think that's-
You realize what you're saying when you say that?
Mm-hmm.
You know, people, if you're concerned, I know, I understand the way it's reacted to this, but in a nutshell, you're concerned about what you're paying for water, and you're saying add another running and charge additional.
Well, what I'm saying is, is make the cap at five bucks.
Well, and we can look at-
Not, not, not- Not, not nine bucks, and, and make it, maybe, maybe the rate there, the twenty-thousand gallons would be a little less. Maybe it wouldn't be five dollars, maybe it'd be four fifty, if it was at a fifteen-thousand gallon rate. Or, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
So if you spread that out.
Well, we, we go back, yeah.
Like I said, there's ten, yeah, like I said, there's ten percent of the users that are actually in that range that you're talking about that it affects, but we could go back to the other spreadsheet and see, and do the, do the incremental rates, to see what it does.
I think if you, if you go.
It's gonna be dominant.
From zero to twenty-thousand gallons, you're ninety-nine percent.
Focus your attention on that.
How did you check the upper end up to nine bucks per gallon? Just to say.
Well, and that's the school.
It's, it's the school, it's the conservative water, and that's, from my, from my perspective, I did not, I particularly did not see. I saw it conservatively.
They say water, they just tell the kids they have to flush this for poo?
No. Seriously.
They started paying more attention to what they're irrigating.
But they have irrigation meters. They're, that's separate. They have the irrigation meters.
There should be charges there.
Okay, you've got people like me, and the reason I moved here was because the schools are nice, and the lawns look good, and everything looked pretty, and it was a beautiful town. And you guys are gonna turn all the brown crap, and I'm gonna have to move to McKinney.
The fields were being overwatered, the fields were being over saturated, they were getting, I mean, they were, because they handed out too many courts to too many coaches, and there were too many coaches playing with the irrigation.
Well, then you talk to the school and deal with it that way. You're asking my water bill too?
We did.
That's, you're penalizing me, just a resident, for something the school is doing. I get your point, yes, but I don't see the, the logic in it.
Okay, but how am I penalizing you?
Because you're, you're, you're telling them they can't water, and then I, you're telling me I can't water.
I'm not telling them they can't water, I'm just helping, I'm, I'm trying to give them a heads up, as far as how much they're irrigating. And, and the whole, the whole issue of the rate is to try and, try and make it a conservative.
So the upper end of the, the upper end of the rate really was not doing for, for any revenue at all. It was basically set up that high, so you could stop people from.
Some are, some are taxing, taxing the system.
But again, but again, I, you know, in, in my opinion, that's, that's kinda counter to what the city needs. I mean, you're really not taking the city's needs into account by doing that, 'cause you're screwing them out of money.
Not necessarily. Not if we're looking at the base rate.
Not on your point of view.
Frankly.
Well, not if you're looking, I understand if you're, I, I understand the, the dollars at base rate.
The other issue is that the variable costs, when you use more water, there's some costs that that person that uses more water is generating like additional chemicals, additional electricity, additional labor in some, some cases. So, as a way of being fair, the person that's generating those additional expenses should pay more for a thousand gallons.
It's not any more than the first gallon.
A gallon of water, there's a cost to a gallon of water, whether I.
Whether it's a high round or whether it's a low round.
The city's gotta cost to that gallon, but you know what that costs.
I understand, but pumps and maybe courts. I mean, the more we make, the more we tax the system, the more it costs us.
All right, but I mean, those costs are, are linear, they're not curves.
Along those lines, and I didn't, I wish to order.
I went, I, I pulled back the figures, the, the production of the city for their consumption in July and August, and there was a forty-six percent increase in consumption, but the revenue only increased four hundred percent. That's how out of kilter the research was.
So how do we look at that graph that was put up there, and, and figure out how you can, you can maximize that revenue, and spread it across the whole?
You do it down in your base rates. But that, and that may cause problems because the concern of the council, and more so, certain ones on the camp, some, more, more, more voters on the council than some, the cost to those on fixed income.
Can we not give fixed income a lower base rate?
But that's.
Why?
Where are you going with that?
Then you have to give it a consumption. It's, we're in a juggling.
If you're seventy and up, then charge them a lower base rate.
And, and put the burden on.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's legal.
How like you're attacking.
The city can't, right? That's a state, that's a state law. The city's can't, because the state.
Basing off that, your, your.
They can't freeze their rate. You can't, you can't just come on and, and give some.
You can freeze their rate, she said.
A better date over somebody else.
She said you can freeze their rate.
We can ask for it. If you do, like they did with taxes. Then at seventy, or home, they.
You can freeze the rate, but you can't freeze the consumption.
You can't freeze the consumption, but you can give them a rate freeze at seventy, or at whatever rate you change, and yes, you can ask, probably, if you have the.
And you couldn't give it?
Yes, you can.
Mayor, can I ask a question? You know, Jennifer and y'all were talking about, you know, how you wanna do this, and productivity, and the, how we're gonna orchestrate it, and you were saying you didn't really feel like we could get from point A to point, to A to Z tonight, maybe another workshop, and then, uh, Jennifer then suggested, you know, that could we kinda go towards a number tonight? And I think because this has become such a big deal, and there's a lot of feelings about all of this, a lot of knowledge about it, there's been a lot of education here, and Jim had suggested, you know, what does it look like when you make, remove some of these line items, and change some line items? The one thing I've wanted to see for this whole thing is comparisons, you know, and actually putting one thing up to another. This is, whoever has put all this together, I know that everybody appreciates, you got a visual.
Manual.
I appreciate that, because we now have a visual knowledge of the model that you've put together to give the citizens something to chew on. But since there's some other opinions on how this model could be changed a little bit, and how, how can we say, this is model A, this is what goes with it, these are the repercussions, and some explanations with this, in something that you can actually read, and then here's model B? So that way, the citizens know that this has really been investigated, not just, here's the model, this is what we're going with. So that way, everybody can, when you do, and, and there is a majority rules that says this is what we're going with, everybody had a chance to see what the choices were, and why this works the best. And I think it reduces the anxiousness.
That's exactly what was done, in the various workshops that the council had. You wasn't there to see it.
No, I wasn't.
They didn't do that whole process.
Well, I think that what needs to happen is, if it's there, then pull it back out, because a lot of, until people saw all their water bills go up, and mind you, you know, I'm not the person, I mean, I use sink water in a small office, but my point is, is that now that everything's come to a head, and you've got more people involved, let's get those people educated, and go back to the stuff that you presented before.
You know, the funny thing is, that you implemented this right, I, I, I don't think it was, it was the stupidity of implementation that killed it.
No, I wouldn't care.
Well, you know what I'm saying, just go back, bring it back out, so the people that didn't get a chance to get fondle, see it does, and you're gonna have more friends.
Mr. Gibbons made the decision in Cambridge, to the council meeting where we had a hundred people who were that was in there, was here, we had all this information at the time, and we were not around later on the week. We wanted everyone there to see this.
Yeah, I don't understand why nothing like this was presented, but we.
I asked in the council meeting, and the mayor, I asked for Mr. Gibbons and the mayor.
I think it would have probably answered a lot of questions.
I just want, I wanted to.
A lot of people thinking that we.
Well, now there's been a shock and awe, you know what I mean? Now you're gonna be paying attention, you're gonna try to bring the information back out.
Yes, ma'am. I said, Mr. Gibbons, this year, we were discussing.
You know what, I have laughed with Facebook.
Mayor, Mayor has a.
Ask the people to come, they are, you have a.
Whatever it is.
We are.
We lost the people, see, if that not.
You have something out there.
Well, we, we know, we know that everybody put some good intentions out there to make this knowledgeable before, and you didn't have a lot of citizens, but now there's a shock and awe, the citizens woke up, a few of them have said, hey, the mayor's got a newsletter out, there's some.
And the next meeting we have like this, so we're happy to do it. And the next meeting we have like that.
Be optimistic, be optimistic.
Well, be optimistic. The mayor has a newsletter out, you've got a lot more people that have come here, you know. I'm just saying, keep it positive, nobody likes to see you guys fighting. Keep it positive, and I think just bring the information back out, so you can have to, even if you've only got twenty people. You can laugh at me, but I'm just saying, in general, what you're, I agree, but what I'm saying is, the, the game has changed, more people are involved, it hit them in the pocketbook, you gotta get people paying attention, strike while they earn a lot, get your models together, and make sure people get them, and not just on the board. Maybe you get them to where they can go to the city hall and actually see the models and, and look at them, instead of trying to squint their eyes. I'm just saying, make it, everybody learns things differently in a different manner, make it accessible so people can see, so nobody can say, I didn't understand it, I wasn't there, I had to work. So I'm saying, I'm just saying, take a different approach, not that your approach was wrong, but now you've got people paying attention, reintroduce this, so when you're to sit, the council makes a decision, and it's final, and the ordinance is passed.
If not to refund our money, you don't get lift.
Teddy Ann?
Anyways.
Can I say something?
That's, that's my, that's my opinion.
I would prefer to see you take three additional months to come up with the right decision, rather than make a snap decision between now and next two.
I don't want to say three months.
Because, because we're not gonna suffer for the next three months on our water rates, because we're low, low usage months. So let's take our time, talk about it, have another one of these necessary, but make the right decision when we do make the decision, rather than possible to make another bad decision.
But James, we have to address the retroactive rate. That needs to be.
Well, but that money will keep, Jim. I'd be just as happy to get my six dollar back in June as I am now.
I have a question. We were talking about changing and making adjustments, are we also referring to the sewer rates, since those have, that's, what, I'm sorry, we up. What we're seeing is.
The water rate affected the meter rates and the sewer rate.
Yeah, our sewer rate's crazy now.
The water, and the water meter rates, and sewer, sewer meter rate.
Right. I saw the data on both, that our, that our amounts for the sewers is quoted into our website now, match what our water consumption is as well. So we're, we're.
We don't have sewer meter.
Right. So that's what I'm saying, it's, so now we're, instead of having our lower rates that we had, it's, it's just pretty.
Why was the ceiling taken off? Is, was there a reason?
Single push.
Sewer, we had a ceiling of ten thousand five hundred on sewer, until last year. It stopped at forty-two dollars and thirty-six cents. And, and we took, for some reason, it was taken off, and we started being built on total consumption.
And you were back building at that time?
No, for that, for that.
I mean, I mean, basically, the previous month, you see, other sewer, as well, I just wanted to know.
You used to do the, you used to.
Why, why didn't you?
You used to do it on the highest crap.
Why did it go away? Can any of y'all answer that? Huh? Could any of y'all answer what James is saying? Why did it go away? What took place there, it goes back to what we've been looking for as part of the budget, trying to get the revenue stream, and not do it down in the base rate for the fixed income people. The only way to do it was through consumption discharge. So we had to take the ten thousand five hundred, the ceiling off, in order to try to gain revenue on the, on the discharge, on higher consumption. It was, it was based from the revenue stream, we just wanted the budget.
But are we not looking at the same possibility? If we go to the inner poverty, to.
Yes, I love it, I love it.
I know, we're looking at the same, we're looking at the same, that's, that's hardship on the low users.
Yes, and that's, that's what we face. Do we want to do, okay, and I have, I know due respect, you're not seventy, I don't know who you are, but.
I'm seventy, I don't mind that.
Okay, I, I, it's, it's no disrespect to you at all, but I feel you should say you're, pay your fair shares to the people, and, and I can't help but think that, we have to find again that fixed revenue gain, which is in the base rates, and that's where the highest percentage is affecting, including those that say we don't. It's, it's just a factor. And in order to try to protect that last year, as I said, that's why we didn't touch the base rate to try not to affect you, knowing we lose using that ten thousand.
No, no, I never used that ten thousand. I used thirty thousand in the summer. But that's what got me, is, it used to quit at ten-five, and now I'm paying on the full thirty.
Everything that was done, from my point, was done in consideration, I'm trying to consider those, sixty-five are old, and five-thousand gallon in there. But at the same time, capture a revenue stream on consumption and discharge of a high amount of water, and be fair about it. And we actually, we actually done and looking at the percentage of usage from, even in five thousand, we have influence. And then when you do that, and in five thousand, it, I mean, when you look at a total, nine out of ten is between the two of the two million. So, if that's where your revenue is at, that's where you have to get the revenue. Plain as. Well, the one business we, we've lost, part of that is, I hear, is the one counter to water, with, what is it, one, the business we lost here right over there. Sorry. Yeah, that's what I heard, the reason they quit.
Yeah. Let me just thank you.
I was thinking. Three hours later, we're still talking.
We got, we got people.
What was that? What was the sex report, sorry?
However, things are happening, or whatever.
I used to get a coke paper all the time. Oh, yeah, that's just like, yeah, more funny place.
Okay. Okay, at this time, I would like to know the feeling of each council member on what the rate would be. We will start with, we'll start at the other end this time. Councilman Smith?
Change everything from five up, five dollars up, take out the depreciation, take the impact down to, at most twelve, and see where that puts it. I don't know. Just like I said, when I talked to, to the newspaper, when, I said, if whatever we did caused this kind of an uproar, then we need to fix it. We need to have that done, and that can be done, right now, and that can be, see what effect that has on base rates.
Okay. Karen? Councilman Kower? Karen? Karen? This is on rate only.
And the rates need to be, the retroactive needs to be taken off.
I have a question about your feeling. What you wanna change from five up? Do you want it all to be five, or all five?
And the depreciation taken out, and the impact being established, watching.
Can we see it?
Reduce the number of laws.
Can we can see it?
I can do it right now.
But, just, you're gonna have to write down that number, 'cause it's gonna change, it's gonna change the spreadsheet.
She saved it the way they are.
You can copy, you can copy, you can change it. I've got. I've got. I'm gonna say, they got it written down in front of them, just wait for them to change. You can tell, I've got. You can always keep your buddy, Tom, if you go back.
Okay.
It does handout, you gotta deep.
Oh, yeah, I've got the whole thing.
All you really want to tell us is how does it change the revenue compared to what your budget is?
The revenue is neutral. It's revenue neutral.
Same revenue.
It's the same revenue.
We're still meeting the budget based on the...
But by changing this, we've taken that, if we went back to the tab where the depreciation is, that goes zero.
Your base?
The impact fees, the revenue stream for that goes down to twelve. That's why, that's why I created the blue panels. We can sit, we did this in the budget workshop in July or August or September, and we just played on blue numbers.
So what you did on what I just asked for?
Yeah.
You changed the sixty-three eleven to sixty-four oh five.
Sixty-three, yeah, base rate change.
Less than a dollar by going five dollars on that.
Okay, well, yeah, I don't have those numbers. I'm just, yeah. So this was sixty-three eleven, now it's sixty-four oh five. Now, at five thousand rate, it's what compared to what?
Eighty-eight eleven.
Eighty-eight eleven to eighty-eight oh five.
That one was one twenty-eight eleven.
And so it's all, it's jumping about a dollar.
About a dollar for each one.
Two twenty-eight eleven.
Two...
Four forty, three forty-eight eleven.
That's, okay, that's twenty dollars.
Four eighty-eight eleven. There you go.
Four eighty-eight eleven, that's sixty dollars.
Six eight to six forty-eight eleven?
Six forty-eight, so that's a hundred and twenty dollars.
My point is...
That's true.
This is how you do it. Twenty to sixty.
It's just, okay, you're right.
Well, yeah, basically what that does is that allows the people of the upper end to go ahead and buy some more water that we wouldn't buy over, which probably makes some sense, fellas. And it hasn't really changed the lower numbers at all.
It's less than a dollar.
Yeah, less than a dollar change in the base rate, and yet you've gotten rid of my seven hundred dollar bill.
And you're not hosing the highway.
But you're still allowing me to buy more water.
We're still allowing you. So I think, I think your overall input there is gonna be more positive.
Okay. That is what Mr. Councilman Smith's suggestions play. Councilwoman Moore, do you have a suggestion on the rates? Yeah, I would like to see the five thousand gallon increments. I think that the idea is good, but I don't think we can do it right here with this because it's not set up for that. Can you put that out? Can you save that? Okay, save that.
Save that as a...
Save this, Jim Smith?
I said that ten minutes ago.
I know, I was using your idea. Thank you very much for making me look smart for a second.
Just a second.
She's my best friend. She's my best friend. And, you know, instead of going at the 10,000 gallon up to four dollars, if we go from two fifty at five thousand, at the 10,000, I would like to see it more gradual, go up to maybe the three fifty and then up to five. It's a small amount, but it would be more gradual than going from two fifty to four to five.
So you'd wanna use two fifty, three, three fifty, four, and stop at five?
Mm-hmm.
Leaving the depreciation at zero and the impact fees at twelve.
Right.
Two fifty, three fifty, four.
Yeah, well, the two fifty, three fifty, four, five.
Karen, at the twenty thousand, it makes basically a dollar change to all the rest of them, the lower ones. Then it makes by four dollars, at the four dollars, the 10,000 makes a four dollar change. At the next one, it made a twenty, twenty-four dollar change, all of them higher than what those are. So that one's lower, okay. Then three forty, three forty-eight, about forty-four dollars. The next one, eighty-four dollars. Hundred and eighteen dollars.
So it's a little more graduated.
Yeah, but that gets them down to a little...
Yeah. But I think going from two fifty to four, five. Okay.
Leaving the depreciation at zero and the impact fees at twelve.
Right.
Two fifty, three fifty, four.
Yeah, well, the two fifty, three fifty, four, five.
Karen, at the twenty thousand, it makes basically a dollar change to all the rest of them, the lower ones. Then it makes by four dollars, at the four dollars, the 10,000 makes a four dollar change. At the next one, it made a twenty, twenty-four dollar change, all of them higher than what those are. So that one's lower, okay. Then three forty, three forty-eight, about forty-four dollars. The next one, eighty-four dollars. Hundred and eighteen dollars.
So it's a little more graduated.
Yeah, but that gets them down to a little...
Yeah. But I think going from two fifty to four, five.
Fifteen thousand, twenty-five thousand in there. And four, four dollars.
Okay, so then, two fifty to three, three fifty to four, five. Great.
So this is three, this is three seventy-five here. This is a half, it's only half.
Go with lead up. Send that you wanted. Well, they have the fifty, five thousand.
It would take me about ten minutes to do it, but let's just, we can, we can have that done by the next time.
Yeah, okay, but just show a little more graduated up to five, five max, you know, for the...
Okay, save that.
Okay, next to you, Billy.
What I want to do is the first one, before you do that, I want to notify the council and the audience of something. We only have this building until nine o'clock. Y'all better hurry up. I can't move it. Kicking up in Oxley. Thank you, council for really being nice to your client. I really appreciate it. Everybody feels the sweat down our new...
Shh, quiet, please.
Four dollars, five dollars, six dollars, seven dollars, and then go. So just maybe lower them all by one.
Two fifty, three, four, five.
Seven, eight.
Yes.
Which means the last category you save...
Well, now, what about, the depreciation's still...
Zero.
Zero, okay. And...
Depreciation's zero, which yours?
No, I didn't change the number of lots.
Okay.
Okay. The emotional board wants the one on the end, seven fifty. First of all, the middle one went down.
Because of the lot numbers.
Yeah, your lot numbers. You're still forecasting forty-five impact fee, uh, impact fees for forty-five lots to be about sixty thousand bucks.
The other reason that the base rate is looking better is the depreciation.
Yeah, that's a big...
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Okay, is that how you...
You understand when you take depreciation, I mean, that's, that's plenty that I'm gonna have for a fair...
Would you save that, Jennifer?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm not a great, I'm not a big fan of...
And we'll go to Mr. Jennings.
What's our comparison on that one?
Okay, can I have quiet, please?
No.
Okay, you save that one? And now we'll go to Mr. Jennings, please.
You have money for it, yes, but you won't have that annual housing. My thoughts in this is that, knowing the condition of the infrastructure and the needs of the city, knowing, knowing what deferred maintenance does to the overall operations, I deal with it every day. Depreciation is something we must have in this budget. I just, I still, Steve, we cannot expect Mr. White to operate and maintain what I know things come up and then he has to address. I had the depreciation staying at ninety-four five. I had the 5,000 range going to two seventy-five. The 10,000 at three twenty-five. The 20,000 at three fifty. And I maxed at three seventy-five the rest of the way out. What that does is it leaves our revenue streams, it leaves depreciation for the deal, but it gives our high-end users and industry that may want to come into the city an opportunity to purchase water at a very reasonable rate.
Okay, would you save that, please?
What do you want to do on the number of lots?
I would leave the lots at forty-five. Actually, I mean, we discussed that. If they build or don't build, it does not really impact the city and the overall, we can get it or we don't.
And depreciation acts as a hedge. You give it, you do everything you got to, depreciation.
Okay.
And we have a hedge against that.
If we have depreciation built in it, we're right.
If you will save that, we will go to Councilman Moore.
But you don't have to rename mine for this. I liked that one. After seeing it, I liked it. I was gonna say the same thing, the depreciation, I'm very, I think, I think we all got the information tonight of just how important that depreciation really is. And see what Mr. Jennings just did on his, I mean, that impacted everybody less than any of it, and we still got our depreciation. I think that's a very good plan right there.
Okay, and that concludes the consensus on the water rate. Do you have anything you want to add to that? Okay. The other, save that.
So what's your, what's your question? What's, what's our...
Where do we move forward? Which one do we use to address it?
What is the feeling of councils, everybody?
Well, there...
You go on.
Sometimes you really need to look at it, I repeat it four times. What is the feeling of the council?
I would like to put in, put in the, from the last page from the state board, I want the chief presenter to read to us, put that in there from someplace in the document saying this is how we will implement it, right?
You're talking about procedure, yes.
Yeah, but that can go in this document, that can go in this document.
Okay, would procedure...
Would that go in this document?
Sure. Would the procedure be separate?
Yes.
The procedure would be separate, so we've got three, five different, four different views of rate trade. Who do you suggest we go from here?
Should that be, I would be, I would agree with this.
I could have, I'm the guy to send all four, and I think the city would be okay with that. Send all four...
Is it all right?
But it's hard, it's hard writing the ordinance for the water rate to change.
Okay, now, we're thinking about...
Maybe the next council meeting, we can get a consensus review of the difference.
What you could do is send the, give them a chance to review it and then bring it over to the council and see what their suggestion is. When we, then maybe we can get a majority on the rate, and at that time that we're discussing it. Does this have to be done this week?
No, I mean, if the council doesn't want to pass or against this next, you certainly don't have to. I'm just trying to establish a timeline, so...
What you want, they can pass what they want that ordinance to be, it's week...
You can give directions to stay to draw...
Give directions, but they can't be, sit down and all four of you, for them, to look at it.
So at the next council meeting, we can have another discussion out of here, and we all agree on...
Where we can say...
The water rate ordinance was done every year, so the procedure, if that's gonna be determined, it's...
Except this January.
Right, that would be a lot of...
Is that what you said? That makes sense.
Okay. Can I have your... Can I? You know it's scouts, you know what that means? Okay, well, we are the council tonight. What we have discussed is that we will have all four printed out and put in the packet for the council next week. We have a council meeting next Tuesday, and at that time, we will see our consensus, consensus on the rate. The procedure is an entirely separate ordeal. So if that's agreeable, you will receive in your packet four?
America, and I'll make one, I'll make the one change over there.
Yeah.
Jennifer, can we change the forty thousand to four, fifty thousand to five, and sixty thousand to six?
Dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
You said four, five, and six?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then, Mr. Russell, is this still agreeable with you?
I'd like to cap it at five.
Okay.
I don't know that that changed too much.
And he, and then you will have a separate one, does he even like to cap it at five?
I'm good with that.
Okay. I have a question here about sewer rates, though, that are going up equal to the water rates when they used to not be equal.
Can I say that, Karen? I think that's where we need to look at the winter average. The winter average will take care of it.
Okay.
I love that idea.
That is something separate from this. The other thing we're doing right now is water rate.
Look, who considers that?
But we need to do procedure, yes, we can put the procedure on the agenda, we can also have the...
How much is, how much is...
Winter rates.
If you go to the winter rates.
We'd have to get a, we'd have to figure out a number of the single winter months for the city, of the 118 million, I don't know what that three-month average is.
But there was, there was a reason why that cap was moved through the sewer rates a year and a half ago. I'm talking about the use of the record. What was the reason for the removal of the cap?
We don't use your... That's what matters in the conversation, is the amount that you...
Those base rates, we don't...
Okay, but he's talking about and sewer rates and procedure.
Listen, those base rates, we don't...
Okay, but he's talking about and sewer rates and procedure.
Listen, I mean, we're... We have a problem.
I have a question here. A question for one or two. When we're talking about the winter averaging, what is it based on, what's it based on? Now, we have the, yeah, this was the old, the old rates here, and the new ones are equivalent to the water. If we winter average...
December, January, and February.
And it's the water usage, which would be at a lower rate.
Tipping, yes.
But a lower consumption. But doesn't affect, we're still gonna have the high rate.
Right. And, and we're gonna have to go back, obviously, since we're in the middle of that, we're gonna have to go back to last year's consumptions. And if you want to have a three-year running winter average, we have to go back three, yeah, three, three seasons from now, and then continually update that and do that. That's...
Okay. Yeah. I have one other question as a council, and I would like a view from the council in White House. Can I have your attention, please? I would like to know your view on returning, returning the overpayment for the August and September, and what is your opinion on that? To return it or not? Yes, what is yours to return?
Give credit on the bill?
Return or credit? Return or credit?
I'll settle for, I'll have credit.
Credit.
If you average three thousand, you can go three thousand. What we'll do is we'll come up with a... They have already established a stock route that you can tell it with no problem. We just put in a number.
Soundboard doesn't have the...
I would be in favor of, I would be in favor of going back and looking at the, depending on your ranges you follow, the five to 20,000 gallons, getting an average and giving a flat return, just throwing a number out of twenty-five dollars.
Just, just, okay, that is your, okay. Councilman Moore, are you in favor of return or credit of the charge that was made from the August to September? For the one month?
I think that's a, I think that's a financial question, too. I mean, yeah. Well, number one, is that money spent? Because you had $200,000 through credit.
Through credit.
That's what through is.
We want to charge the entrance, you don't want to...
I said, we want to charge in the entrance.
It is not a call.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't know.
We won't even index that to the group we downed last.
For me, I need to know what all of our people feel this all. I mean, I'm not completely against it. I'm uneasy in saying yes, because I don't want to hurt our city by making a bad decision.
That way you're using our money for a whole year.
So I'd like to. If we can do it, and how we can do it, how the impact.
One for information, one for.
What I'd like to see is, let's compare it as a structured, that's not possible. That's not possible. Our software will back it up like that or retroact. What I'd like to see is.
Ben, did you, excuse me, did you hear the reply? That it was not possible to refund or credit because our software will not back up?
Why cities can't do that?
We'd have to hand calculate each account. We have over thirteen hundred accounts. We'd have to hand calculate what your bill should have been and then go in and credit the difference.
We had suggested that return it.
We have one person in the office.
They had. Returning it in the middle of the summer. A lot of time between now.
There's a way.
You took it out. Return it. Eighteen twelve bucks. Three highest uses once, we're returning the third on each month or whatever.
If we have to be out of this building by nine o'clock. We are not going to be able to do the agenda. The item's only agenda was consider and take any action necessary regarding funding from the Texas Water Development Board. Well, these are items that I do not feel like we will be able to cover, Mr. Baker. Is that something that we can do at the next council meeting?
Are you talking about the extension policy?
I am talking about.
Water Development Board?
Establishing an extension market policy. And funding from the Texas Water Development.
Everybody here, you don't need to listen to the presentation.
With what?
You need to listen to the presentation.
Okay.
Did we come to a consensus on refunding the water?
Well, no.
We might vote on. I'm unable to support it, but I have a vulnerable opinion to do.
So you need to match that.
Yeah. Tell us whether or not it's possible to return it from the summer.
We have some time to think about.
Would that be enough time to be able to calculate?
Could it be enough time to?
Calculate and figure out how much we will be.
Yeah, I was going to say, come on, it's thirteen hundred. One month. You put a program on, it automatically hit one buck.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll keep y'all informed. Are you, can we stay for our presentation?
If I know what I'm.
We can stay for our presentation. G T U A.
This is the number. One of the things I wanted to leave with y'all this council is that you don't have to fix everything at once. So I would suggest holding off on water average, give the staff time to do the research on that. This model is staying with you. So next year, actually, every year, you should do a rate sturdy. Every time you adopt your budget, you plug in the numbers until tomorrow and you see what your rate should be. Then you can make it work that end. So just piece mill it, maybe just get the rate set for now and then look at water averaging for next year. Because you've got a lot of balls in the air.
Can we get you on TV or something to talk to us or FaceTime or?
Okay.
You got iPhone? No.
We can do Skype or something like that, you know, one of the younger systems.
So we don't have to keep, maybe you come up here.
Okay.
Okay, one thing, since you are leaving, I would like to make the announcements now. Tomorrow, at this college, there will be a grand opening and a ribbon painting at ten thirty. C D C meets Thursday at six thirty at the Chamber Office. The regular council meeting will be January the fourteenth at six thirty here. And tomorrow, we were notified by Sarah Summers, she's the President County Officer, Office, she's with the President County Office of Emergency Management. And tomorrow FEMA and T D E M will send a representative to conduct a preliminary damage assessment process on the damage that was done during the ice storm. That concludes the number seven, so we're going to go back.
Mayor, will this be, I mean, I have to go get some consider. Will something like this be available for us to view? Can it be elsewhere somewhere?
On the website or something?
On the website or something, so we can have access to look at it? Is that possible? If we can't say?
Y'all can try.
I have, I got a babysitter.
She has a babysitter?
We can, I mean, we.
This, this is number four that we're working on. This is consider and take any action necessary regarding funding from the Texas Water Development Board.
I'll definitely be very brief, because I don't want to delay you setting your alarm clock. But my name is Bob Johnson. I'm one of the engineers that works for Van Alstine, partner in Austin Johnson, and Lynn is the other engineer. We'll go ahead and, we want to talk a little bit about, takes part of the water board loads, many of you have talked about bond funds to pay for projects. And that's what bond funding is typically assigned for, is for large projects that require a lot of money that the city doesn't have in reserves. So the Water Development Board has basically several programs that are available. Oops. Not too far. They have a Clean Water State Revolving Fund, which is basically for wastewater improvements. They have the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, which is for water improvements. And then they have Water Infrastructure Fund, which is for projects that are in the state water plan. And Van Alstine is a part of the state water plan. They have improvements. The CGMA line was a part of the Van Alstine's water plan for the state, as part of the state water plan. There are other funds that are available, but these are the primary ones we're going to focus on just in this presentation. Some of those other funds have not been developed yet. The state of Texas just voted and approved six billion dollars to go from reserves into subsidizing low-interest loans for water projects. That program, according to the Water Development Board staff that I spoke to, will probably not be implemented until 2016. So that money is not available at this point as a resource. Excellent. The Drinking Water State Revolving Fund is designed for, and this is just a background, it's federal government money. It's given to the states. Each state gets an allotment of so much money. And the long term for repayment is ten years for design and planning, twenty years for construction is the maximum. It doesn't have to be that long, but that's the maximum that you can borrow that money for. The interest rate is subsidized at the time of sale. There's a one and a quarter percent cut. Right now, those interest rates are about three and a half and four point nine percent, depending on the bond rate that you have before the bond is sold. And that's what I'm talking about here, three and a half and about four point seven. It's actually a little higher than four point seven right now. There is a two and a quarter percent loan origination fee. It's kind of like points of closing at a house that is required that the city pays, but that money can be put into the loan, so you don't have to come up with the cash. Okay? Now, the administration is by the Water Development Board. Each state administers the drinking water and the Clean Water State Revolving Funds. Each state has an organization that administers those funds and manages that process. The typical process in Texas, you tell them in a given year, by March, what it is you want to do two years from now. And so you go in and you give them a list of the projects that you'd like on your wish list, if you will, and you want to fund these projects. That, the state then takes about a year to decide which one of the projects are going to be identified for funding. They have a limited amount of funding and usually have more projects than they have funding. At the end of that, at the end of that year, like, for example, in March, Van Alstine of last year, not of 2013, but of 2012, Van Alstine put in a funding request for a water loan and for a sewer loan. The sewer loan was approved. We got notified in August of this year that the sewer project was approved for 2014. The water project did not make the cut. What happened was the, they had more projects than they had funding, and Van Alstine's project didn't make it above the line where they had available funding. So they did not receive that priority. In the process of the Water Development Board being reorganized, they have made some changes. And in making those changes, what happened was the only money that was allocated was money that was actually needed for planning and design, and it gave them additional funds that were available, and they invited people to submit for additional projects to go ahead and do it. And so what they told Van Alstine was, you can go ahead and resubmit your project and ask for it, and it may be able to be funded. Well, the original project that was submitted was for improvements in the disinfection process, for the water lines, and for some water line improvements. That was what was initially submitted. Go ahead into the next slide. What Van Alstine did, and we did as engineers representing Van Alstine, we worked with G T U A to help us with the loan process, we submitted that revised request to include connection to the CGMA line. We developed a cost proposal. We determined what it was going to cost, how much would it take to design it, and we worked up a cost proposal to do that and submitted a new application, which was actually for more money than was originally submitted. The original submittal was about, oh, million four.
Two point four.
Two point four. We've submitted one for about three point three million, which includes connection to the CGMA pipeline, a blending tank to blend it with the well water, which is required if you're going to put it into the system together, a new pump station that will pump that water into your system, and additional piping that will transmit, transport that water from the connection to the CGMA line onto the western side of the city. What this will do is it will avoid you having to build an elevated water tank today. It doesn't mean you won't have to have one tomorrow, but you won't have to build one right now to serve that part of the city. This revised opportunity was submitted to the Water Development Board in November. Didn't cost the city of Van Alstine any money to submit it. It was just preparing the paperwork, submitting it. The staff notified us on December twentieth, I believe it was, or the twenty-third, that Van Alstine's loan application did meet the requirements and is eligible for funding. We will have, what Van Alstine will have to do is go forward with the process to apply for those funds. We only, we only got approved for the planning and design at this point because the project is not ready for construction. So what that means is that in 2014, Van Alstine can receive, if they go through the process, the funding to do the planning and the design for that project. What that means then is it would be in line to get the construction funding as soon as the planning and design is completed. And so that would probably take in the neighborhood of a year, give or take, to get ready to go to construction. So the construction funding would be available in 2015, is the plan at this point. It was approved, and the initial amount is about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the planning and design effort to put that project together. Please note that at this time, Van Alstine is not obligated to any funding or, at all. That is not, we've submitted for this. The Water Development Board staff has indicated that it's going to be approved or that it's allowed, it's eligible, but Van Alstine is not obligated. If you change your mind, if Van Alstine decides they don't want to do this project, then there's no problem. There are some benefits to doing this project. Connecting to the pipeline. You're going to connect, we already have an outlet that's available. This is a project, we would install tanks for the blending. We would have to do a study to determine what has to be done to that water when it's blended to make sure that there's no impact to your system. That's something that has to happen. The new pump station will transport that water to the western part of the city, that pipeline, and the connecting to the existing water system. All of this would be components of the project. The benefits? It does provide a reliable, high-quality supply of water for the city from the CGMA pipeline. It is water, and it was mentioned earlier that you're paying for water that you're not using because of a take-or-pay agreement. What you'll notice here, the hundred and sixty-one thousand, equates to about eighty-four million gallons of water. That is, you heard earlier that you use a hundred and eighteen million on an annual basis. Your actual total water usage is higher than that, as Steve alluded to earlier. So this accounts for about half of the water that Van Alstine uses or used last year, because Van Alstine used almost a hundred and seventy million gallons last year. The increased capacity of the system gives you a benefit on the western side of the city, where some of the development has been proposed and discussed. The project is, is part of the capital improvement program that will be accounted for in impact fees. And so that project would become a part of your capital improvement program, and developers, as they develop, would pay higher impact fees. It would help offset some of the costs of this project. The low interest would be subsidized with a one and a quarter percent reduction, so you would get a lower interest rate by using the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. There are some impacts to this, that this project will have to the city. The city would take on new debt. At this point, you'd have additional debt of four hundred and eighty thousand. Once the construction starts, you'd have additional debt. Our current estimate is for about another two point eight million, two point seven to two point eight million dollars. And that project would come into about 2015, and so the debt service would have to be paid after that. The city would have to participate in the operational costs of the CGMA pipeline. Right now, the city does not pay for that cost because they're not taking water. But there is a management fee and there are operational fees that the other entities that are taking water from that pipeline are currently paying. If Van Alstine started using that water, they would then have to incur some of those costs. And the water from CGMA is going to taste different. I don't care who you are, I mean, if you go from one city to the next, all water always tastes different. The water does going to have. One of the things I can assure you, and I know this from my own personal experience as Director of Utilities in Dallas, the biggest thing people want to know is why does my water taste funny? And, and you have situations where when the lake turns over several times a year, you're getting muddy taste in your water. The water's still safe. It's not harmful. It's safe to drink. It's safe for your grandchildren to drink. It's safe, but it tastes funny. I can assure you that North Texas, who is the supplier for this pipeline, is in the process of implementing ozone disinfection. Dallas went through that years ago, implemented ozone disinfection. That eliminates that problem completely. Dallas never gets taste and odor complaints again anymore from that situation. And so by the time this project were implemented and Van Alstine started taking water, that ozone process will be online, and so that issue will not be an issue. Now, it is still going to taste different than your well water. And so blending it will minimize that or eliminate some of that issue, but it is still going to taste different. And the other thing is, North Texas rates are going to go up. That is an impact that Van Alstine would incur. That water supply rate that you're paying for that water is going to go up. They had about a, I want to say a twelve to fifteen percent rate increase this year. Many of you, many of you know that they just spent three hundred million dollars to build a new pipeline because of the Lake Texoma issue, which was twenty-five percent of their water supply. Well, that rate gets passed on to their customers, their wholesale customers, which would then be passed on to Van Alstine. So again, there are some impacts for this project. However, it does provide a long-term, reliable supply of water. And North Texas is in the process of extending their system to provide even greater capacity, so that Van Alstine could then take more water as they need it, as they grow. Next slide. With that, I don't know, Frank, if you have anything you want to discuss with this or?
I mean, right now, we're not all getting it, but to move forward, we need to get a feel for the council.
Yeah, the next steps required would be similar to the sewer loan, which has already been approved and already been approved by the Water Development Board. The next step in the sewer loan, which is to make improvements at the wastewater plant. And that process now, the city is, we need to go forward with, and the city will have to approve an application, and that will obligate the city to spend money, to develop that application. And then if the project goes forward, the city would be obligated to take the loan and, or maybe not to take the loan, but if the city took the loan, then they'd be obligated to pay the debt service. The water project at this point, there's not any kind of requirement like that. We will need the council authorization to hire an engineer. I hope you can find one.
In the room?
Maybe in the room. It will require the city to approve hiring a bond counsel, selecting, not hiring, but selecting a bond counsel and those kind of things. And that's a similar process that we went through on the sewer application.
Actually, G T U A would hire the bond counsel.
Right, but the city has to approve it with an ordinance. That doesn't require any financial commitment from the city at that point. Once the Water Development Board approves the project and it gets approved by the board, then the next step would be similar to where we are with the sewer. Then the city would have to authorize going forward with the application, which means you have to develop a bond covenant, you have to develop a, I'm drawing a blank.
Financial blank?
A financial management document, which is a, I don't know why I'm drawing a blank on that. It's a, it's a financial statement is what it is for the city. That has to be developed by an attorney, by the bond counsel, and then it has to be approved by the Attorney General, and then you go ahead and process the paperwork to actually sell the bonds, or for the Water Development Board to go ahead and sell the bonds. Now, once that process gets going, and the bond counsel has to do the work to prepare the bond ordinance and the resolution that the. the bond ordinance and the resolution that the city has to adopt and all of that, that takes money to prepare, and then the city's gonna be obligated to pay that, even if they decide not to take the loan. So, I just want to make sure that you're fully informed, as much as we know, of what's going forward. We're, we're ready now, at this point, to proceed with the sewer loan right now. We just have to have, we'll be talking to Frank, and we'll put together a package for the council's approval, hopefully, to go forward with that process. We're not there with the water loan yet. The only thing we are with the water loan right now is there would need to be a council item to approve the selection of the engineer and bond counsel. And again, GTA, GTUA has done the work and will do that, it just requires the city to adopt that as a, as a resolution.
And your next board meeting is the 20th to 22nd. So, you're meeting next week to approve the process of the solicitation for the engineer and the bond counsel is what they'll be looking for next week to get in front of GTUA's board.
So, what you're looking for tonight is a views of the council regarding this? Is that what you, do I understand you?
Which question do you have?
What he is interested in knowing tonight is what the consensus of the council is, are the views of them regarding this?
On the sewer loan, you want to keep moving forward and putting together the package for the sewer loan?
Can we keep going forward and you want to know what the...
Because we've got two different animals. I mean, he gave a presentation on water because y'all haven't received a presentation on water, because it just became available. But you have received a presentation on sewer that was done months ago, and we're in the process now where it's either, do we want to move forward or not want to move forward, which council's or against his thoughts?
Okay, you want the thoughts or do you want a motion?
There's no motion.
No motion.
Just thoughts and feelings.
Thoughts and feelings, okay. We will start with Councilman Moore.
I feel we need to move forward.
Okay. Councilman Jennings?
I think we need to move forward, but I have some as we move forward. I don't recall ever hearing before, but you said something out about there would be associated costs, which we tapped under the line, long-term operations and overall yearly operations and maintenance of the city. Do we know what that cost is?
I've done a little homework, GTUA can provide the number. It is, it is not tremendous, but it's not zero. I mean, it's...
Well, we need to see that, just for the fact of what we're setting room for. That may be, need to be something you need to consider in these rates we put in the session. The council that seeks next year and goes through budget workshops is in place of, hey, we've got to raise rates because we've got additional expenses, $300,000 a year because we tapped on it.
I mean, you wouldn't have that expense in 15 or 16 years anyway.
Well, I know, it's gonna get there.
Yeah, you're right. I mean, you're absolutely right. You need to take those into account when it's, when it happens.
We'll take my place. Or not you, but you made $2,000.
The best, the best I can tell you is it's, it's not substantial.
He was just reminding council, the sewer portion, the sewer portion will be next Tuesday's council meeting. This is the water, this is the water animal.
Is your view to the forward?
Yes, yes.
Karen, what is yours? More information is needed for me. Okay, and Councilman Smith, what is yours?
How much are we gonna add to our budget?
This current budget's zero.
This budget, nothing. This funding, if we did the best we could, this funding probably wouldn't be available till June or July. And if the Water Development Board provided the funding to City of Van Alstine this summer, that would have to go into next year's budget to begin starting making the payments.
But how much anticipated payments will we have on an annual basis?
I asked Drew that earlier, and he's gonna come up with some figures for us.
My understanding, my experience with Dallas, because I had to deal with bond funds and
capital funds, the typical budget number, and this is a planning number, not by any means defensible number, that the annual payments are gonna be about 10% of the debt.
Right, that's small.
So, if you, if this year's funding is $480,000, as we anticipated, then it would add about $48,000, $50,000 to next year's budget.
You're gonna have to have $480,000.
Then there would be that much additional.
That has to go, where does the funding come from? From rates or from taxes?
No, it has to come from water rates.
We have to plug that into the standards.
Would it ever make sense, once you invested in this, to turn off the tap from the lake?
Would want, I'm sorry, we weren't able to...
My question was, would it ever make sense, once you did this investment, to turn off the tap from the lake water? Or would you be committed at that point?
I would think that there would be a challenge if you've grown, because your wells would no longer keep up. So, I would say you're...
It's not what he asked. He asked, he asked, would there be a reason to turn off the taps of the lake waters that you're just making the tap on?
And I'm just saying, if you, if you've grown beyond the capacity of your existing wells, that would mean that the only option you'd have would be to either find another supply or drill additional wells.
Right, but if you were subsisting on well water, yet you had this as a backup, you have to use it, given the infrastructure that you just built.
Well, the previous decisions by the council have been made such that you're basically kind of already committed. You're gonna have, you're paying for it anyway, so, at least for a certain portion of it or a certain amount of it.
I guess my point is, once you make this decision, go down this path, it's pretty well committed to yield the lake water.
And North Texas is in the process of extending their system. Once they do, the CGMA fees will go away.
Correct, you will no longer be paying the McKinney pass to charge. Right now, the CGMA is currently paying McKinney an additional charge to transport the water to their system, but for the next three or four years.
But to answer your question, the city's already made that commitment by having the CGMA line come through and you're already paying for it, because that debt's, you haven't been paying on that debt yet, you haven't been paying the interest. That debt service is coming up in 2021 or 2025. Yeah, it's, it's coming, it's coming, so...
So, we're paying the $161,000, we're paying some amount of debt, and now we're gonna finally buy in the water.
Yeah, so now, now's the time to start getting the revenue from the water so that you can start paying back.
Right. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, did you get your answer?
Yes, ma'am. If you want more information, you want to know what the payments are, you want to know what the...
He wants to move forward.
But you're gonna move forward.
More information.
You want to know what the payments are, if you understand.
Okay. Then that could, this act could clue.
Any questions?
Number four. We are going to skip number three, we're going to number six, and number six is subject explanatory. So, I will just pass these out. This goes to Mr. Jennings, and this one goes to Mr. Moore, Karen, and Jim Smith. You'll notice the last paragraph says we did discuss having a review in January, but no action was taken on that discussion. So, this is something for you to review at home, work out, and decide. I also have two more coming. So, at this time, is there a motion that we adjourn?
No motion.
A motion by Jim Smith, seconded in by Kevin Tarver, that we adjourn, and all those who favorably agree. We are adjourned at 9:29.